Good morning. It is nine o'clock. We're going to start the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Today's agenda actions will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place your cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of Commissioners convening as other boards. Members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Lion Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards is indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. Uh, this meeting may take a break today between eleven thirty and one thirty for lunch. Roll call. I have all five commissioners in chambers. Invitation will be given by Mitch Forster of the Mason Valley Southern Baptist Church. Please rise.
Let's pray together. Our Father in heaven, uh, we call upon you as the only God, the true God, the creator of heavens and earth. We ask Lord today for your wisdom and your guidance. You be in the one that knows the past, present, and the future. We pray that everything we discuss today will be with your guidance so that we will know how to continue to live in this county, in our country, in this state, under the laws of our land, our constitution, our bill of rights, our declaration of independence. You have granted us so much liberty, so much goodness in this county, Lord, and we pray that it will continue. We thank you for everyone in this county and in this room that is serving you, and we do pray for their blessing, your blessing upon them. In all of these things, we do ask in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, that your perfect will be done. Amen.
Commissioner Henderson, do you need to get some lunch, please?
Please join me. I'm glad to be here. I'm here in the United States of America. And to the Republic, which stands. Thank you, my good God, and the faithful, and the members of this.
Thank you. Public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item, but before the board takes any action. Do I have any public comment in chambers? Or on Zoom? I see none. So the next thing will be item five for possible action review and adoption of agenda. Do you have any changes before I make them? Okay. First of all, I'm going to move item seven A in front of, uh, I'm certain, and then in time certain, I'd like to move six B in front of six A. Any other changes? Commissioner comments? Any public comments? Do I have a motion?
Mister Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as with the changes you mentioned.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Five zero. So we will proceed now to item seven A for presentation only. Award Deputy Brian Carl with the Lyon County Sheriff's Office Meritorious Service Award. Sheriff Pope.
Uh, good morning, Sheriff Brad Pope. For the record, Deputy Carl is a few minutes out, uh, but I believe he knows what happened on that night. We can, uh, we can get started. Um, as I've said many times in this chamber, when we start our shift, it's Lyon County Sheriff's Office deputies. Uh, we don't know um, what we're going to be getting into, and that was no different on the evening of August fourth. Um, today we are awarding Deputy Brian Car- Carl with the Meritorious Service Medal Award. This medal is awarded to the individual who demonstrates courage and the pres- perseverance, perseverance and the performance of his or her duties towards the protection of life or property, the prevention of a major crime, or the apprehension of an armed or dangerous criminal. And what I would like to share with the board and the community is the letter from Commander Miller, uh, who completed the investigation um, into this incident and submitted the Deputy Brian Carl for this world award. Sorry, my tongue's swollen. On the evening of August fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, Deputy Brian Carl began to shift and stopped at the pilot truck stop gas station to get fuel in his patrol vehicle. While fueling his vehicle, Deputy Car- Carl observed a vehicle pull to the gas pumps nearby, then leave and park near the store. Deputy Carl, noting the suspicious activity of the vehicle, ran a registration check on the vehicle and later a once-in-warrants check on the driver. Deputy Carl learned that this subject was wanted and had multiple warrants for his arrest. Deputy Carl noticed the driver had exited the vehicle. Deputy Carl then entered the store in an attempt to find and apprehend the suspect. Deputy Carl was unable to locate the suspect in the store, and when he exited the store, noticed the vehicle was gone. Deputy Carl then proceeded to leave the pilot and observed the vehicle uh, was back at the gas pumps. Deputy Carl positioned his vehicle near IAD West Front and waited for the suspect to exit the pilot. Deputy Carl observed the vehicle leave the pilot and proceed on IAD West. Deputy Carl attempted to conduct a traffic stop. However, the suspect fled westbound on I eighty. Deputy Carl initiated a pursuit and Deputy Stephen May soon joined. There he is. During the pursuit, the suspect attempted to ram his vehicle to Deputy May's vehicle and continued westbound into Washoe County. The suspect exited the freeway into Watts, Worth, and led deputies down a dirt road around a farmhouse, then crashed his vehicle into an irrigation ditch on the property. Deputy May and Deputy Carl exited their patrol vehicles and almost immediately met with gunfire from the suspect who had taken a position in the rear cargo area that was dodged during go. Deputy May saw cover behind a tree while Deputy Carl took cover behind Deputy May's patrol vehicle. The suspect fired multiple rounds at both deputies with the obvious intent on killing them. Deputy Carl reported around pass so close to him, his ears began ringing, and he thought he'd been struck in the head. Well, Deputy May took cover behind a tree, the suspect opened fire on his position, striking the tree at least once, effectively pinning Deputy May behind the tree, without a vantage point to see the suspect. Seeing Deputy May pinned down by gunfire, and after nearly being shot himself, Deputy Carl engaged a suspect by returning fire into the rear cargo area of the vehicle where the suspect was located. By engaging the suspect, Deputy Carl allowed Deputy May to get out from behind the tree and get back behind his patrol vehicle. When interviewed about this incident, Deputy May credited Deputy Carl for saving his life, stating that had Deputy Carl not engaged him, he was certain he would have been shot and killed by the suspect. After reviewing body warrant camera footage and conducting interviews into the incident, it is my firm belief that Deputy Brian Carl demonstrated courage and perseverance in his duties to protect the life of Deputy Stevens, man, or faced with an armed criminal determined to kill law enforcement to avoid being apprehended. Deputy Carl's actions on August fourth, two thousand and twenty-two are in keeping with the highest standards of the Lyon County Sheriff's Office and qualify him to be awarded the Lyon County Sheriff's Office Meritorious Service Award. Want to say thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, and also appreciate the service, Deputy Carl. Outstanding job. Very proud of you.
Sheriff Pope, if you want to get one with all the sheriffs, officers, sheriff, how much?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Not in the way, huh?
Yeah, your picture, take a big guy. Well, it doesn't be a good time to cross the W L line on the highway. That's called a travel. Thank you, gentlemen. Does that picture on the next Sheriff's Department calendar?
Yeah, should be. Okay, continuing on, um, we're going to go to item six B.
Got to wait two minutes. You have to wait two minutes.
Mister Chair, we gotta wait a couple of minutes.
Two minutes. Moving, moving right along. Um, actually, it's, we're could have been changed, but so not just. Minute and a half. Ah, there's Mister Foley in the back. You have fifty seconds to get to the front. Okay, nine fifteen, sir. I will read your time certain in nine fifteen for possible action approved plans for employee health, dental vision, and life insurance coverage effective July first, two thousand and twenty-three, and authorize the comptroller to sign associated contracts. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Josh Foley, Lyon County Council for the record. I appreciate you moving this up for us today, uh, so I can get to another board meeting this afternoon. Uh, in Reno. So we went out to to the market and did our annual shopping at the market. We came back and took that, those results to the insurance committee. The recommendation to the, the insurance may came back to the Board of County Commissioners is that we proceed forward with signal, which is approximately a fourteen percent increase on the high deductible plan, the twenty-five hundred dollar plan, and approximately almost thirteen percent on the, on the non, or the low deductible plan, which is seven hundred and fifty dollar deductible plan. It's also a change from a deductible of five hundred dollars on the the regular plan to seven hundred and fifty dollars. Most of the counties around us, our surrounding jurisdictions, their base plan is the twenty-five hundred dollars deductible type of plan, and their base plan isn't as rich as our twenty-five hundred dollar deductible plan is. So we're still leading our, our surrounding jurisdictions in that. This also includes, as we discussed, a budget time, a recommendation in the rates to increase the dependent care coverage subsidy from thirty percent with a cap of three hundred up to, uh, fifty percent. And that's based on what our surrounding counties are paying for dependent care coverage. We're trying to, to keep our staffs adequately, um, taken care of on the health insurance coverage. And as far as dental vision and life, no changing rates or carriers. Uh, I'm open to any questions you may have, but that's the synopsis of it.
Uh, Commissioner questions? Any? Public comment? Pretty, pretty easy on that one.
If I could add one thing that I
Certainly.
that we're expanding the coverage on, we have a we have a contract with the Sheriff's Association for fifty thousand dollars life insurance for all of the members of their association. Everyone else in the county is at ten thousand life. This proposal in front of you expands that fifty thousand dollar life insurance, uh, benefit to the rest of the sworn staff in the county, which namely would be bailiffs and juvenile probation officers. That's the only other change that would be there, but we felt like that was applicable because they are also sworn officers taking care of similar type of duties um, as a Sher- Sheriff's Association.
I did have one quest- question for you. Um, we did have a late backup on this. Uh, I got through about half of it comparing numbers, but was the difference?
So there was no difference, the late. So what happened? Our agenda software decided you become temperamental when you put over a thousand pages in the agenda packet.
No.
Don't understand it myself. And just so you know that we're not mine, I had a very short presentation. Uh, so the late backup, when I printed it out and I was going through and I looked at it like, holy cow, there are no dollar figures here. There are nice boxes in lieu of. And so Aaron and I discussed, I'm like, here's what was attached to the agenda packet that didn't actually come through to. So technically, the only difference is the numbers are now legible.
Seem to be legible's favorite. Okay, um, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Just, just a comment on the, uh, expanded payments for dependent coverages from thirty to fifty percent. Um, I'll be interested to know how much that ends up costing us. So I, I, I'm sure you're going to track that for us.
I, yes, I am very interested in that because as you expand that benefit, traditionally you may get more usage of that benefit.
Absolutely.
So at existing usage, it would cost approximately three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars for the countywide for that, which was built into the budget. However, as you pointed out, we'll be interested to track that through and rolling coming up next.
Thank you. And if you're ready, I'll make a
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. I move that we approve the plans for employee health, dental vision, and life insurance coverage effective July first, two thousand and twenty-three, and authorize the controllers to sign associated contracts. Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? A five zero on the vote.
Thank you.
And we'll go to six A. I'm certain, nine fifteen for presentation update only. General Manager Bert Bryant with Walker River Irrigation District to give a report on current and forecasted Walker River conditions. Mister Bryant.
Governor Hawke today and Commissioners. Good morning. Um, I was going to give you guys a quick rundown on the current forecast and updates, uh, since we last spoke about a month ago to give you guys a, a better feel for the current, uh, situation with the spring thaw and the concerns for flooding this year. So I'll start with current conditions and forecasts. So the slide here that you see is the current snow till data for the, um, Walker, uh, basin. Those are all the snow till sites that, that represent the snowpack on our region. I know it's a little difficult to see, but the, the summation of it is, um, on the, the first column, you have the name of the site and going off to the, to the right, that's the elevation. And you have the snow depth, the number in actual inches of snow depth that's there. So you could see at about nine thousand, six hundred feet, we have two hundred and forty-six inches of snow. Inside that snow, uh, two columns over, we have a total of a hundred and eleven point two inches of water. Um, and then there's a comparison over the next, um, two columns over of what we should have, uh, based on our average timeframe for this date. And you'll see that there's fifty six, uh, s- uh, six inches of water that we should normally have. So we're sitting at above a hundred and ninety-six percent of average at that elevation. The one I would kind of call to mind would be the next one down below. That actually is the only gauge. It's the love it meta- metal gauge. It's the only gauge that's, uh, within the lower snowpack range. It's roughly at about seventy-two hundred feet. We have a total of seventy inches, of which we have thirty-two point six inches of water inside that. We should have point one at that levelation for this date today. So it calls it to mind the, uh, concerns that we had last month when I brought up to you guys that we were at record levels on the snowpack for the mid to low range. And you could see that we, we definitely are still concerned at that. I, I wouldn't pay too much attended, attention to the percentage of average because when, when we hit zero on there, it goes to zero. But on this, this projection, it shows you're at thirty-two thousand, six hundred percent of that age. So it's, it's a little misleading on that, but, um, the, the main focus is that we still have a ton of snow yet to come. We do know that there's a lot of concerns from folks of, uh, fatigue of hearing about this going to flood, it's going to flood, it's going to flood, and they don't see anything really occurring. Um, but, but there's definitely concerns for that moving forward. This is a actual projection of what all of those snowwater equivalents pan to within, uh, the, the entire basin. The black line at the top is actually where we're at. You could see that it's starting to kind of trend downward, meaning that we've pretty much got to the peak, which that, that's not unusual. Usually we meet or around the peak, uh, around the beginning of April. And obviously, we've, we've kind of extended a little further than that. Uh, all the other shaded lines below are the historic highs and the historic lows. So we're definitely still significantly higher, higher than we've ever been at this point. These are the current projected totals. I, I did put these in last month for you, but I gave you a better update. Since then, we have had a shift up in the fifty percentile because that's what we project with all of our operational, uh, plans, runoffs. So for the East Walker, fifty percent, we're counting for between the first of April to the last of July, two hundred and fifty thousand acre feet of water to pass through just the east side alone. Um, in two thousand and seventeen, we had two hundred and eight on the east side. To date, from the first of April to today, you've already passed eighteen thousand, five hundred acre feet of water through there. Uh, the same, uh, for the bottom, for the West Walker, again, running with the fifty percent median. There is the potential for us to see those higher numbers on the twenty-five or ten percent. It just depends on what Mother Nature brings, but on the west, we're projecting four hundred and forty-eight thousand acre feet of water from that April to July. And we passed four hundred and six in two thousand and seventeen. We've only had, uh, from the first of April to now about ten thousand acre feet of water. Okay, so here's a projection of all the previous, uh, water years in total. Uh, the, the bar to the far left or the far right, excuse me, in, uh, red is our current. So you can see we are, uh, projected to be the heaviest water year ever on record on the East Walker. The same is for the West Walker. Uh, we run back all the way, uh, I'd want to say to the forties on that side, but, uh, basically the same holds true on that, that we have enough to fill, to fill and empty our res- our reservoir several times over, uh, to the tune of potentially about ten times in Topaz and over six times in Bridgeport. The one thing that I would, um, make sure that I convey to everybody is that there is quite a bit of concern from the experts from the River Forecast Center and the Weather Service that were under projecting the low end uh, amount of snow in, in the Bridgeport and the west area, or the, excuse me, the east area. So those numbers could inflate by later today. Obviously, between now until the end of next week, we are going to be in a warming pattern. So we will definitely see how things will kind of shake out within the next two weeks. Okay, so potential, uh, reservoir operations with the fifty percent, uh, exceedance as of this morning. Bridgeport's at six thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight acre feet, which is only fifteen percent of capacity. And Topaz is at, uh, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and ten, uh, acre feet, which is twenty-three percent of capacity. So this first projection is our operations that we're planning on for Bridgeport Reservoir. And basically, uh, you have your storage pool in the blue, you have the total releases in the red, and then you have the dosh, the dashed green line with the inflow. And the hope with, uh, Bridgeport is to keep from the siphons kicking on, and obviously last resort is to, uh, totally evade spilling at the reservoir at Bridgeport. It's your traditional dam, only one way out. There is a spill, but is an earth spill. So the concerns are if we did spill, there could be, uh, concerns of issues with the, with the dam in itself. So all of our reservoir operations are going to be in keeping with protecting Bridgeport Reservoir in its entirety. Uh, you could see that the, the Weather Service and the National, uh, or the, uh, California Nevada River Forecast Center are projecting that we're still anticipating the peak runoff to be around, um, the first, second week in June on the west, and then a week to ten days after on the east. And it's reflective on the curve because we will start to cut off the higher, uh, releases at Bridgeport Reservoir once those start coming in by starting to store at the appropriate time, uh, to kind of help offset with that. I would note that this morning we have one thousand, one hundred and forty CFS coming out of Bridgeport, which is putting us in flood stage. So this is, uh, the map that we're planning on for the fifty percent exceedance for reservoir operations for, uh, Topaz. Topaz slightly different than Bridgeport. We do have the dam upstream of the reservoir. So we can actually block off flows from going into the reservoir. The potential for a dam failure does not uh, impacted in the same way than it would over in Bridgeport. Inundation of flooding would occur upstream of the reservoir because our spill is upstream of the reservoir. Uh, the, the issue that we have with that operation isn't that we can stop water going into the reservoir. It's that we don't have a good feel for the amount that's coming back the natural river channel side. So if you were to look at the USGS gauges this morning, we're only releasing under four hundred feet from Topaz, even though the gates are wide open, gravity's taken over. But we have, uh, just short of a thousand feet coming in at Hoy Canyon, which is making its way towards the valley this time. Okay, so for the downstream components for the, uh, USGS gauge sites, this is, uh, the Stroh Snyder Gauge. And what I changed on the slides from last month, I actually incorporated a line for the minor flood stage, which is the, uh, lower green line, which is at eight, eight point five feet on the staff, and then a major flood stage, which is that nine point five, um, in the blue. As you can see right now, our current operations As you can see right now, our current operations mirror above major flood stage. The reason that you are not seeing further inundation here in town or even toward the Mason gauge is because of the fact that we're completely flooding out the alumio fans on the upper east at this point. We are getting reports that all the way up to the elbow that there's quite a bit of flooding that's occurring. That's beneficial to us at this point down here at the bottom of the city limits and everything else, but at some point we will hit an equilibrium, so to speak, and then everything else will be kind of coming back in that direction. Um, the the one thing that we will keep in mind is that because we have to operate Bridgeport to protect it, the majority of the bulk of the flow that we're trying to concentrate or control is going to be coming through this side. So uh you will see that there's a plateau on the far right uh over much major flood stage when we get to high flow uh peak runoff, so to speak. And for a long duration of time on East Walker. The reports we've got from the road department is there is water already lifting up on the top of the road on the East Walker, just upstream of the Bridgeport Ranch right now. The next gauge site is um the uh the Hoy Gage. So this is coming in before Smith Valley, also incorporated the minor and uh major flood stages on this one, as you can see. Based on the projections and the River Forecast Center um ensembles, we're we're projecting to kind of go slightly above minor flood stage for quite some time, but the hope is barring some kind of significant event, hopefully we will not see major flood stage on the west side and going into Smith Valley. Then the next gauge is a culmination of two uh major gauges here within the Mason Valley, the uh Mason Gage, which is at the Snyder Bridge, as well as the Wobuska Gage on the downstream end of our um district. We do have um the the major and minor flood stages that are on there as well, and you can see that the projections, the purple line is what we anticipate for the Mason Gage or what would impact the city of Yarrenton. Uh, so we definitely are going to hit uh minor flood states. The hope is we won't hit to major. Um, we do project based on the ensembles that we're going to be running, probably roughly around three thousand three hundred and fifty CFS uh coming in through here through town. So there will be low line flooding that will occur uh much more to the extent than what we saw potentially in the uh event in March, because we're we're talking about roughly about a thousand more feet, give or take potentially uh during the duration of this timeframe. And then as far as for Wobuska, uh they they will definitely be in in major flood stage over there, but it's an unpopulated area going in toward the reservoir uh reservation lands over there. And they have a quite a wide range of area for the uh water to go in in the reaches over there upstream of their reservoir. So in conclusion, you know, based on those April through July forecasts, uh peak runoff, it's pretty much close to about seven hundred thousand acre feet for that period of April through July for the entire system. Um, we are still waiting to see if those numbers will shift up based on whatever component that the experts are saying from the east. And as I mentioned before, the we're anticipating a max below about three thousand three hundred and fifty if everything kind of holds true. Um, and and that's that's definitely the hope. And then are the best that we can do, not being a flood control district or anything like that, but we will uh we will continue to use our reservoir management to try to help mitigate, prevent any significant flooding from happening, but it will definitely be happening in certain areas. As far as for the extent and when we're projecting to see the the worst of it, we don't know. Uh, we don't know where, we don't know when, we don't know how much, but we will do the best we can. Um, we've been working with the County Manager and Emergency Management, and there is a town hall meeting set up for Tuesday, next Tuesday night, five thirty here. Uh, so we'll give an update again, and there'll be folks from D E M that will be there to answer any questions. And we'll kind of just see where everything kind of goes in there. But if if anybody has any questions, you guys more than welcome to ask now or feel free to reach out anytime.
Questions? Question? Mr. Henderson, any questions?
No.
Uh, I I do appreciate uh all the work that your people are doing on the ditches. I noticed that they're most of them are full of water. People are taking delivery. Um, see a lot of fields in Smith's Valley that are taking a lot of water on, and uh I'm I'm sure that's helping a lot to fill up the ditches and and you've been doing a lot of work above my house. I know there's been a lot of uh excavators up there. Um, not sure. I haven't gone up there to look at the crack in the road and see if the side of the hill is going to come down, but I I should be okay if it does. Um, but that's uh appreciated. Everybody's out there making sure things are working right. Any public comment, public questions? I don't see any. Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Thank you, sir.
So we're down to six C time certain nine thirty uh for possible action, determine whether to uphold or reject the rolling A wastewater treatment facility phase or expansion project bid protests submitted by FAR Construction Corporation, a resource development company. And I believe uh Mr. Burketa, you are on.
Chairman, uh Commissioners, David Burketa for the record. So I'm gonna give um an overview of uh kind of what the process is that we went through, and then I'm gonna turn it over to uh Mr. Manley. Um, it's counsel for uh the the uh Resource Development Corporation. So um um, there's a lot of information in the bid packet. I'm not going to repeat it up here, but I'm going to kind of reference it just so we can give you some orientation. Um, so on February twenty-eighth, we had a bid opening for the Rolling A project, but we had two bidders. Um, Bar Construction Corporation, doing businesses, resource development company, which I'm going to refer to as RDC moving forward. Um, they had a bid amount of nineteen million nine hundred and ninety thousand, and then KG Walters Construction Company, which I'll refer to as just KG Walters, had a bid amount of twenty million two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. So once we got the bids, we had uh Dowell, which is a representative for Lyon County, uh go through and um issue a recommendation uh of award letter. And what they determined in their letter is that both parties were responsive. Um, they had concerns that RDC did not meet some experience requirements based on the personnel they submitted with their bid package. And based on their experience associated with large wastewater projects. So their determination was that KG Walters was a responsive and responsible party, and that's who they made an award recommendation to. Um, we received on March ninth, we received a um public records request from uh RDC's council on March tenth. Um, we received a bid protest from RDC's council. And uh four major elements of the uh of the bid protest was uh it went through, was a very detailed and thorough description of the relevant statutes that apply, you know, to this bid award. Um, also, just in reference, sorry, I didn't mention it's exhibit C in your package. There's a whole series of exhibits. That RDC was uh satisfied the qualif- qualification requirements for the project. Um, that Dowell had improperly determined RDC was not qualified to receive the to receive the award in that RDC is responsible and submitted the lowest bid for the project. Um, on March sixteenth, we received a supplemental to the bid protest uh by by RDC's council. It's part of the public records request. Dowell had sent an email saying showing or stating that uh both parties were responsible and responsive. And that there was no state law prohibited from awarding RDC this project, and that was in the email from um Dowell. Um, what was omitted from that claim is Dowell also stated that they did have the issues with RDC's qualifications. Um, the the resume of the individuals working on the project and lack of experience um that was associated with RDC's project list. March thirty-first, um Dowell issued a revised recommendation of award. So they went through and um reviewed the bid protest, performed additional research and evaluated the bid specs. And based on that, their statement is that it would be difficult to make the case that RDC is not responsible for this project, not not a responsible bidder. Um, and so their recommendation is that we would award the project to a resource development company. Um, they also made the recommendation that we have uh the uh Lyon County District Attorney's um issue an opinion on this from the legal aspect. So um we do have in your packet, which is exhibit C, uh exhibit G, um the DA's office issued a opinion letter in that the three elements of that was that um there's specific NRS that applies to this contract award, and that's NRS three three eight dot one four seven. Um, that RDC's bid protest is legally sound in that the word of the project to RDC is legally supportable. Based on this information, um I reviewed the 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 recommendation from from uh Dowell, the updated recommendation from Dowell. The DA's office opinion letter. And um I the Lyon County Utility Department has a recommendation that the construction project would be awarded to RDC. Um, I sent this letter to both the bidders. Um, and from that, we did not receive any further bid protests in the project. So with that, um, you know, this is to either uphold or reject the bid protest um for this process. And at this point, um, I'd just like to turn it over to Mr. Manley with the who's counsel for parties.
Good morning, uh Chair Hawkeye, Vice Chair Henderson and County Commissioners. As Mr. Burketa stated, my name is Philip Manley. I'm an attorney at McDonald's Toronto. And I represent Far Construction Corporation, doing business as Resource Development Company. And I also may refer to them as RDC or or FAR throughout this uh discussion. With me this morning is the President of of RDC, Mister uh Jeffrey FAR. As well as the Vice President of RDC, Christopher Herb, sitting there in the aisle, and a project manager from RDC next second. Um, I'd like to thank Mister Burketa for his discussion and and introduction and overview of the process. And I would like to thank all of you for the opportunity to speak with you today. Obviously, we're here to discuss the Rolling A wastewater treatment facility base four project and the bid protest submitted by my client, RDC. I don't intend to take a lot of time. I know you have full agenda, uh full agenda today, and there's also extensive information in the packet, some of which Mister Burketa has referred to. Um, but I would like to take a few minutes just to highlight some of the key aspects and a piece of facts, bless you. Um, and then allow you to ask any questions of of me if you have any questions. So as the agenda item six C states, the the question for you all this morning is whether to uphold or reject the bid protest. And our request respectfully is that the board uphold the bid protest submitted by RDC. Um, not only is it our our position, but of course that we want you to do that, but that's also the position of the engineer. Um, Dowell, as Mister Burketa stated, the the opinion of the Lyon County District Attorney Office as well as uh the opinion of Mister Burketa's office at the Lyon County Utilities District, it all agrees that this award um should this contract should be awarded to RDC and it's uh bid protest should be upheld. And those are legitimate opinions that are sound and supported by law. And in our opinion, should be followed. So if I may do um okay, I'm ready. So in front of you is a a presentation, a PowerPoint that I I put together. That's an overview of some of the information that's included in our in our bid protest, which um as Mister Burketa mentioned, this specific uh the first bid protest is exhibit C that has a number of exhibits as well. Um, one through seven, and then we submitted the supplemental protest, which is exhibit D in the agenda packet with exhibits eight and nine. Um, so what I've tried to do is try to distill down some of the information because I know it's quite voluminous. And um so I I, you know, I'd like to, you know, point you to a couple of key points i- in this presentation as we go through. So um as I mentioned, some of the company background, we have uh Mister FAR and Mister Herb are are here with us today. But what I would like to point out is that Resource Development Company has an A general engineering um license with the Nevada State Contractors Board. And that's the license that's required to perform this specific project, the wastewater um treatment facility. And Resource Development has an unlimited license. So the Nevada State Contractors Board looks at um the folks' qualifications, financial capacity and everything else like that, and they have determined and they they can set specific limits on how much um a contractor can do on a specific project. And and the Contractors Board has determined that RDC has an unlimited license. They can do a project of any size. Similarly, for State Public Works in particular, the State Public Works Division does a prequalification process that goes through a number of factors, one of which is um ex- experience and and financial capacity and things like that. At the time of submitting this bid, Resource Development's uh prequalification status for Public Works was twenty-five million. And um so more than five million dollars than than what it's bid is here. So under, you know, state law, they're already prequalified in order to form this project at nineteen million nine hundred and ninety thousand. Since then, that number was was in fact a little bit outdated, the twenty-five million. Resource Development has submitted a request for an increase and recently was granted an increase to do projects up to sixty-five million. Next slide, please. This this right here is a copy of the letter from the State Public Works Division that just, you know, shows the backup of of what I said in the previous slide, so you can see it for yourself um on the the state in Nevada um letterhead there. Next slide, please. Here's a uh resume of Mister FAR, the President of uh Resource Development. At least from my perspective, uh the words are a little small, but hopefully you can see uh um that are in front of you, but I'd just like to point out a few things that are also highlighted in PowerPoint. Uh, Mister FAR has a bachelor's degree in construction management. He's been involved in construction for over twenty years. He's been running Resource Development for over eighteen years. Mister FAR was also closely involved in the um North Valley's wastewater treatment plant um projects, which was for Douglas County. And uh got him a little bit of the next slide. And that's an important piece of information because a- as we pointed out in our in the bid protest and um in the packet as well as the presentation. The uh North Valley wastewater treatment plant project for Douglas County is substantially similar to this project here, the Rolling A. A lot of the uh components are the same, and it's the same uh suppliers island for a lot of the um a lot of various components for the project. And like I said, Mister FAR was was closely involved in in that project. That resource development successfully built. Next slide, please. In front of you now is the uh resume for Mister Herb, who's the Vice President of Resource Development. Mister Herb has a bachelor's and a master's in civil and environmental engineering, and he's a professional engineer. Also over twenty plus years in in construction, and he has experience both in um private and and public construction. And uh Mister Herb's kind of specialty and expertise is in wastewater um facility similar to this this one at issue with the Rolling A project, and he was also closely involved in that uh North Valley wastewater treatment project for Douglas County that has um a lot of the same components as this project. Move next slide, please. So here's here's a slide that um that shows this. This information was included in in Resource Development's bid bid package that pointed out, look, we've done the um rolling A project in Douglas County. And as I mentioned, it's the same basis of design, both of them, uh both projects include a sequential batch reactor by Xylem and the uh same structural concrete subcontractor that Resource Development used on that project was included in their bid and will be used um on this project, and that's Northern Nevada Concrete. Next slide, thank you. So I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on this this slide. Uh, Mister Burketa kind of kind of touched through um through the points, but one one kind of uh key key date that I would like to point out is um the April fourth, twenty twenty-three. That was the date that Mister Burketa and the Lyon County Utilities um Office submit a a recommendation of award to this board for the contract to be awarded to Resource Development Company. At that point, under Nevada law and the three uh three three eight point one four two statute triggered the timeline for any bidder to submit a protest. And the law says that a bidder must submit a protest within five business days. So that would have been based on my calculation by April eleven, if any bidder wanted to submit a protest. Um, contesting or refuting Mister Burketa and Lyon County Utilities um Department's recommendation of award to RDC, that was their window to do so. And as Mister Burketa pointed out, um no other protests were received from anyone. There was only two bidders, so KG Walters uh did not submit a protest within that time. And the the law, NRS three three eight point one four two subsection two requires specifically that that protest be in writing within that time period. And there's also case law um on point, and I don't want to bore you with all the legal jargon, but just for the record, the case is Fisher Sand and Gravel. But just for the record, the case is Fisher Sand and Gravel versus Clark County. And, uh, the citation is two zero one zero WL nine nine two one eight, that's how you find it on, on Westlaw. And in that case, the, uh, one of the bidders, Las Vegas Paving, um, was, didn't agree with the, uh, recommendation for award. And they showed up to the, um, hit Park County Commissioner, um, meeting and presented a bunch of additional information. And the county commissioners considered that information and ultimately. Determined not to award the project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Who in that case was Fisher and in our cases, Resource Development. And the, uh, that, that case went to court. And the court decided that it was improper for the county commission to consider any of that information. Because it was after the five day period, specifically said, um. The state court granted Fisher's request for a writ of mandamus on the ground that the board had considered information. Raised by LVP, Las Vegas Paving, more than five days after the bid opened. In violation of law citing NRS three, three eight point one four two, the statute that I cited. And then the state court remanded that decision to the board for rehearing and instructing the board to exclude. Consideration of the objectionable information raised by LVP. So I just want to take a, a moment to kind of highlight that, because as Mr. Bruketa confirmed, there was no protest. Right? So any additional information that may be raised here today, um, should not be considered and should not be part of, part of the analysis in determining. This specific protest or the award of the contract. Uh, next slide, please. And as you, as you see there, that's just a highlight of, of the numbers which you have in front of you and you've heard, uh, multiple times. Next slide, please. This, uh, this slide provides a snapshot of one of the pages of the bid instructions. And the governing documents. And not only does it show the, the, this is, uh, Resources Development's bid. Not only does it show the, the price there, but if you look, um, at the bottom of your screen. In subsection D, it confirms that this, uh, bid process and the award is governed by. NRS three, three eight point one four seven. And as the Lyon County District's Attorney's Office has, has confirmed that fact. Um, and what that statute shows, ma'am, and you can go to the next slide, please. Is that, um, you know, when you get through all the legal jargon. Is essentially the contract shall. Must be awarded to the best bid, which is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And in this case, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder is Resource Development. So our position is that the contract is required to be awarded to them. Next slide. And this is, this is a, uh, citation from a Nevada Supreme Court case. That kind of puts a little color on that statute and the purpose for that statute. And, you know, so there's some, there's some key language there and some key, um. Uh, and instructions, if you will, which is the purpose is to secure competitions, to save public funds and to guard against favoritism. And this is the duty to the taxpayers, right, to have a fair, um, and competitive system. Thank you. So, uh, uh, Mr. Bruketa mentioned the initial, uh, recommendation for award from, from, uh, Dow. Uh, and as he, as he pointed out, Dow determined that both RDC and KG Walters were responsive. And so that's not at issue in this bid protest, that has not been challenged by anyone. And so, but in error, um, Dow determined that, uh, Resource Development is not qualified. Importantly, uh, they didn't determine that, um, RDC is not responsible. Um, they looked to a, the separate statute in NRS, uh, three, three eight point one three seven seven. That, that deals with, uh, pre-qualification. And which was, uh, not part of, of this, uh, bid award process, there was no pre-qualification, there was no qualification status. Um, or application to determine that, uh, RDC was not qualified. And in fact, so as part of our protest was that that's, you know, statute was, was clearly an error. Because it doesn't even apply to this process, this, this project is governed by three, three eight point one four seven. Which simply requires the award to the, to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And, uh, so that, that's basically what I, what I just touched on here, right? NRS three, three eight one three seven seven, um, doesn't apply, and there is not a qualification process. And importantly, in Dow's, uh, the initial determination. Like I said, um, RDC was d- determined to be responsive and responsible bidder. And that was also shown in the email from Dow. And that, that's never been a question. The only question was, was this, uh, you know, looking to the qualification statute. But if we go to the next, uh, slide, even if we were to go into that analysis, or, uh, maybe two more, this just shows, um. This one, you, you know, even if that statute would apply, which it, it doesn't. And, uh, my reading of the Lyon County District Attorney's opinion also confirms that, you know, that statute doesn't even apply. And this project's governed by, um, three, three eight point one four seven. A proper analysis of RDC's, um, qualifications and, and those factors, they would be qualified. Right? And there's a number of factors and I'll, you know, unless you have a question, I don't think we need to go through them all here today. But, and as I touched on at the beginning of, of the presentation, you know. It, it resources development has the A license, uh, unlimited and public works twenty-five million, which is now, um, up to sixty-five. And if you go through all of those factors that are even in that statute, they would be qualified, and in fact, they are by the state public. So, um, you know. This slide right here shows that email that I was referencing where Dow, the engineer specifically said. RDC and KG Walters, both contractors are responsible and responsive. And again, no state law would prohibit them from them, RDC being ordered to project. So to recap, you know, when it comes down to RDC is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And under, uh, you know, Nevada law, NRS three, three eight one four seven. Um, you know, the statute says shall, the legislature has determined that they must be awarded the contract. And it, and as I mentioned, all three other, um, parties involved, Dow, the Lyon County District Attorney's Office and, uh. The Lyon County Utilities Department have all, um, found that RDC's, uh, bid protest is legitimate, it's legally supportable. And the recommendation is to award to RDC. So, uh, on behalf of RDC, I respectfully request that you all, um, vote to uphold RDC's good protest. Um, and then I, I guess on the next action item, I don't want to speak out of turn, determined to award the contract to RDC. Now, um, if there's any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer any, but not on.
Questions? Any questions from the public? It's like we have. You gonna make public comment? If so, state your name and sign in, please.
Uh, Commissioners, my name is Walt Johnson, I'm President of KG Walters Construction. Good morning. Um, qualifications and previous experiences, a question before you today. Uh, the presentation you just heard and this protest. Is trying very hard to convince you that Far has a relative experience required for the project, and that you have no other decision before you. The problem is, at the end of the day, they do not. This should concern all of you. Experience does not come from contractors' license limits or from the state of Nevada public works list. Experience comes from successfully completing complex treatment plant projects similar in size and scope. The one thing you have not seen in the presentation was a list of projects of similar size and scope. And it's because it does not exist, they don't have it. These complete, complex projects are not built or managed by one person or the owner of a company. It's a complete team that has done this successfully time and time again to give you the required experience. There are a lot of very large contractors with unlimited license in the area that do some great work. But they don't have the experience and expertise to do this work, so they don't bid it. This is very specialized work. Your own wastewater treatment facility is a key part of your infrastructure, which cannot be shut down or afford interruptions. This is a critical project that requires a qualified contractor. The bid documents included language concerning qualifications of bidders and previous experience lists that we had to submit with our bid. But it failed to clarify how that information would be used or what the minimum requirements were. However, the intent is clear by the engineer's review. Upon review of the bid documents, your engineer correctly discovered that Far does not have a required experience. They've never built a project of this size, not even close. In the, in this presentation, you were told that even if there was a qualification requirement, that they would need it. And I have to tell you, that's not true. Our experience is that most owners and engineers require three to five projects of similar size and scope to be successfully constructed. And Far has zero. There's a reason why Far did not propose on this project the past two times it was put out as a C Mar job. And it's because they did not have the experience and they knew it. The revised recommendation from Dow in response to the bid protests discusses. Possible legal issues and possible delays. What it does not do is change the fact that their review of Far's bid shows they do not have the experience. That has never changed since day one. I still feel the right decision is for you to reject the bid protest and award to KG Walters. However, at this point, if you feel you cannot. The only prudent thing to do would be to reject all the bids.
Sir, your three minutes are up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments?
Sorry, I can't get it to shut up.
No further comments from Commissioners, no further public comment, and I'm looking for a motion. I have a motion. We'll jump in.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to uphold the bid protest as presented.
I have a second.
Well, second it.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Keller, second by Commissioner Hendrick. All those in favors, say aye, aye. Anybody opposed? So the, um. Protest is upheld by a vote of five zero. We'll move on to six B. I'm certain. Nine thirty, we're past that for possible action, award a contract to Far Construction Corporation. Uh, it's also known as Resource Development Company. Or KG Walters Construction Company for constructing the Rolling A wastewater treatment facility, Phase Four Expansion Project. And, uh, Mr. Bruketa.
Chairman Hawkeye Day, Commissioners David Bruketa, for the record, based on their previous decision of the previous item. I'd recommend that you make the award, uh, contract award to Resource Development Corporation.
Any questions, we have, uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, th- thank you, Mr. Chair, I just want to go over it, it's not. I'm, I'm taking, I'm referring to this form here, it was actually in the packet for the previous item. But where it says that the, or describes the bid. The, the bid is for eighteen million, one hundred and ninety thousand and change. And then the force account of one million, eight hundred thousand dollars, is that a contingency account?
Yes, sir, that is a contingency account.
Okay, so there's, there's built-in ten percent contingency.
Yes, sir.
Because, you know, regardless of, of who we award the contract to. Um, it's going to be watched very closely and you know how mu- how fond I am of change orders. So I certainly don't want to be seeing any, and, and if, you know, if the eighteen, one point eight million dollars isn't enough, don't come asking for more. That's all I'm saying.
Any other?
I, I did have one question under the contract times, it's like the, the penalty for. Delays is twelve hundred dollars a day, that seems really low.
To short, can you talk about that specifically?
Oh, this is Gisho Bandai, he is engineer. Um, that's what basically Dow came up with. Oh, yes, I think it's low number, but that's what they recommended by our engineer.
Cause that doesn't seem substantial at all, I mean, for a job this size.
Uh, based on the timeline, we feel like the time is pretty, uh, much. That we hopefully take care of the construction, it was originally. I believe twenty-four months, I think we went up another. Four months because we evaluated the project timeline, so. So this is a pretty, uh, comfortable timeline that we hope that project will be done within that time.
Sorry, Commissioner Keller.
So you, you were saying that, so you've extended the timeline by about four months? So that, that's your buffer?
Um, during the bidding process, some of the comments we received from the bidders, that this is pretty tight. Considering the scope of the project. So we, we further evaluated along with Dow. So we accepted that, uh, and we found that that's a valid point, so we basically extended it to another four months. Particularly during this, uh, period of supply and demand issues, we see projects end up getting affected by the supply of material. Not for the construction side, but material supply. So we found that's a legitimate, uh, extension of the time of the project.
Hold on for a second, looks like some. Do you have anything further?
Yeah, yeah, so thank you, Mr. Sh, I kind of want to follow up on, on Commissioner Hendrick's. That does seem awful low for, what, what, what do, what do we typically have in our contracts for delays? What's the penalty?
Um, that's called liquidated damage, I think that's twelve hundred dollar per day. Um, going beyond the sub-ten cell company some days. So county is entitled to reclaim that much money to the contractor if they don't finish the project by that time.
Commissioner Keller.
Yeah, I, I just think that's, I, I agree, that's low.
I'm just going to go off the same thing, uh, what's it cost the county if, by shutting, by delaying the project, uh, more than this twelve hundred?
Um, yeah, I think, uh, it could be much more than that, depending on what's kind of violation we have. Let's say, for example, if we don't comply with the discharge permits, which is the, uh, when this has. The state board, I mean, the Nevada Department of Environment, there's sometime in my experience, put a lot of fines for day. Much higher than twelve hundred dollars. But again, that depends on their decision basically. Sometimes they allow some time to extend the project, or they may come back and put a fine much higher than twelve hundred dollar worth it.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Um, it seems like though this is one of the terms that's already been agreed upon, so this would be a conversation for our next bids. And I'm not sure that can get changed right now, we're, no matter how we feel about it. I think we're locked into the twelve hundred, um, and, and, uh. Um, in listening, just, um, on a separate note, that's. And listening to, uh, KG Walters and, uh, um, Far, I. You know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I guess, is what separated, is going to separate my vote, so.
Anything further on this?
No, I, I just can't support it.
And, um, for Commissioner comments, any public comment?
Unfortunately, you folks all know who I am, but for the record, I'm Russ Wright and I live in Dayton. Um. My concern as a citizen would be some assurances from who I was awarded the contract. That they're ready to step up with the supply, material supply. Uh, Mr. Bruketa has a project with a lift station near the golf course. That was postponed for an indefinite period of time because they couldn't get critical supplies to complete to the lift station. And we remember that some of that delay was during the rainy season, which complicated the delay. So I think in considering the contract, there ought to be some clause that. Early on in the contract, we step up and start purchasing necessary materials, so we don't get down to the end and have to extend the contract. Because we can't find the necessary pieces and parts.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Anything further? Any other public comment? And.
Hi.
State your name for the record and sign in, please.
My name's Dave Backman, I'm, uh, co-owner of KG Walters, uh, my partner, we all spoke a little earlier.
My name is Dave Backman. I'm a co-owner of KG Walters. My partner, Walt spoke a little earlier, but just want to maybe follow up on some of the things Walt said, and really the experience is kind of a big deal. If you even consider during the bid period where all the questions came needed for clarification, guess where they came from? Our company only. And that should speak volumes as to you don't know what you don't know, and you don't have the experience to back up what Mr. Manley tried to present. We don't need a lawyer here because we our experience speaks for itself. We've just finished a fifty five million dollar treatment plant for Seab Reno. We're on engaged with one for Washington County just up the road, just shy of a hundred million. We've built rolling A over the decades, so we know that facility. Um, it's actually hard to believe that only takes a poorly written bid protest from a lawyer to change the persuasion of this. And you should consider carefully, if you talk to your neighbors over there over in Douglas County, one of the highlighted projects for RDC was a project at North Valley, a similar treatment plan, but nowhere near as complex as what it's going to take to get this project done. Um, you will understand it ran late, nearly litigated. It was a horrible job for all parties involved. And if I had to guess, you're going to see more of the same. Um, my only suggestion was be careful what you ask for here because it's going to be a challenge for the for the county that that bid contingency was actually our idea that got incorporated because we know how complex is going to be. There's a lot of unknowns and unforeseen's out there, but during that bid period, we're asking all the questions to try to level this thing up to put it in the best place possible to do a construction contract with the county. That contingency that you're worried about will be burned up on efforts to make up lost ground, but these guys don't understand. If you do a comparison, just cast some place concrete, we self perform. They do not. Our concrete cost is nearly half of their cost when you do the combined additions of all the subs doing the work. That should concern you because that means they're skinny everywhere else. And this job can't afford that. You cannot be skinny when it comes time to dealing with the process, keeping that treatment plant up and running. We have the proper facilities in it. And oh, by the way, there was an ambiguity in the insurance requirements. So we had to throw it in just to be covered. If we were to subtract that out, guess what? We're going to be a little bitter on that. The contract referred to no builder's risk required. We didn't do, we said, no, there's no way. Nobody does that. Oh, by the way, Dayton, Nevada is the earthquake capital of Nevada. So we included some insurance costs, guys. And anyway, unfortunately, we're in the position we are just because we're taking safe road.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any further Commissioner comments? Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Sharon. I don't I don't normally respond to public comment, but I do have a question to for KG as to why did you, why did you not file a protest on the second bid within the five days?
Why did we not file a okay, a protest to the protest? You know, I guess in hindsight, if that's all it would take to change the disposition here, yeah, we made a mistake. I'll just say that.
Okay.
But it doesn't preclude you from making a decision here. That's right. There's still statutes that are applicable for you to do the best thing in the interest of the rate parents for this facility, and it's a big deal for you guys to to make that decision based on what you've heard.
But thank you, thank you.
Any further? What? Oh. Another comment.
Chairman, with your with your indulgence, if I may, I don't belabor the point, but I just want to make sure the record's clear.
Got three minutes.
That this is not a construction manager at risk uh bid process. This is otherwise known as a hard bid. And as we've discussed at length, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder shall be awarded the contract. This is not a comparison between we've done this and they've done that and where there's more discretion to the award under a construction manager at risk uh process. And you heard it, you heard it right there. They made a mistake. Didn't involve protests. And so as I mentioned before, um, you know, they're they're entitled to the three minutes, but under Nevada law, those comments that were made should be excluded from your from your consideration as already discussed before. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? If not, then I'll be looking for a motion for six D. I hear a motion from commissioners here. No. Then I no, no motion from the board.
Did we get public comment?
Yes, yes, we did. Yep. And if there is any further comment, then they can jump up and make it, but we had public comment. Um, otherwise, um, I'm going to make a motion then that a motion to be to award a contract to uh for Construction Corporation, also known as RDC, for constructing the rolling A wastewater treatment facility, phase four expansion project. Do I have a second?
I'll give you the second.
Okay. We have a motion by myself and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So we have motion fails. And at this point.
We want to question real quick. What's it going to do to us by if this both fails right now? Where what are we looking at? Uh, consequences to the rolling A? What what is the overall picture? What do we, what hole are we digging right now?
Trying to think how to answer that. David Burketa, Commissioners David Burketa, for the record. Um, you know, in the bid documents, um, it says that the contract needs to be awarded within sixty days if the contract is not awarded today. Um, I guess I'd have to possibly refer to District Attorney's Office. I'm not sure what that means. Um, Steve may have inside it that the contract, I know you didn't write that contract on it, but it's certainly right. You know, the contract.
Uh, Steve Ry, District Attorney. So I I guess initially there's some disconnect between the board's action on upholding the protest and then not awarding the bid consistently with that decision. Uh, because it would seem your decision on the protest was based on the information presented. Uh, and as was pointed out by the District Attorney's Office and Mr. Burketa, uh, this is a low bid process under the statute and you award according to a lot of the lowest responsible responsive bidder. So that's uh that's why it's a little bit confusing on the decision on the award of the contract. Uh, with respect to if you do not award it, the then the contract is, I guess, would not be awarded. And it would expire. Uh, there's other issues that come into play with that, some of the funding, timing, other things uh that could have a significant impact on the county. Uh, so we would ask that the board reconsider based on the decision on the protest. Uh, I think everybody understands that what the issues are, the claims before the board. However, I think it's important for the board to remember that it is a bid process set by chapter three thirty eight. You've been informed of those guidelines. And so uh those would be my comments. Do you have any questions?
According to the law, then uh Mr. Ryan, we go to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. And that's the way I read the law. And that brings up one company that was the lowest bidder and determined to be responsive and responsible. Am I reading that correctly? We've I'm paraphrasing what you just said.
Uh, that's the reading of the District Attorney's Office, and that's the recommendation from Dow and uh, the utilities department also.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just some clarification as to my reasoning for voting. No, I understand the process. I did vote to uphold the protest because I think it was submitted fairly and reviewed fairly. However, I don't agree with the contract itself. So I I would be willing to give the contract to FAR Construction Company, but not this contract. So my vote is not against FAR. My vote is against the contract and pieces of the contract, and particularly um the twelve hundred dollar a day if they substantial, we don't complete it. So that was the reason for my.
That's my issue as well.
Commissioner Hendricks. Okay, and Commissioner Keller, you have a comment?
So so does a, the way I look at this, the contract is our problem. That's in-house. That's us, the ones that did the contract. Uh, you guys are comfortable with that contract. We're the ones that are uncomfortable with it, but you're going to be responsible for getting the job done. And and I have to rely on you and your experience of what you departments have done in the past to support that. I mean, I understand uh what we're saying. I think that's going to have to be brought forward to other contracts forward. You can see where our concerns. But I don't see how I think it's going to end up costing us more by delaying the contract. And that's what my worry is. I'm not particular which one get it as much as it's something's got to be done. So that's my comment.
Chairman Hockaday.
Yes.
In lieu of the DA's um information and position, um, what would be our a solution to fixing this today? Um, regarding possibly, I don't want to say taking a revote, but listening to the District Attorney's position. How is there, is there, what what are our alternatives here today?
Uh, Steve Ry, District Attorney, the alternatives would be to rescind that motion and action uh that you just took um denying the award to RDC. Uh, you could take no further action. Um, or against the recommendation of staff and Dow, you could award the contract to KG Walters. You have three options that we've given you the recommendation. Yes, Commissioner Keller.
I I think that's a motion to reconsider the question because basically, we didn't vote to deny anybody. We didn't carry the motion, didn't carry. So it'd just be a motion to reconsider by one of the applicants that voted against the 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 motion to just reconsider that first one.
A move that we reconsider.
Motion to reconsider.
Anybody can second, so I'll second that.
Second, okay, we have a motion to reconsider six D. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Any further comment? Commissioners?
I have some questions.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So um the sixty days that we stat that is from, can you explain that to me?
So the David Burketa, for the record, um, the sixty days was part of the bid specs and it was from February twenty eighth when the bid was open. So this is the last meeting to meet that requirement.
Okay, now, go ahead.
That's in there for material pricing, right? Well, it's a part of the, since we have to go back out and ask if the bidders will hold their prices, and that is one of the elements. Yes, I just want to provide that clarification.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm I'm really struggling with this.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I would have to say that we can reconsider the motion and and I can reread the motion as I made it. Would that be appropriate since we've uh and revoke? So motion will stand as a motion to award a contract to FAR Construction Corporation, also known as Resource Development Company for constructing the rolling A wastewater treatment facility, phase four expansion project. All those in favor say aye, aye.
I'll second, be a second.
Or second, I'm sorry, second. Second.
We should probably ask.
Okay. Getting caught up in the weeds here. Okay. So I made it again, and second this time was Commissioner Jacobson. All right, so we have a motion by myself and a second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor say aye.
Discussion.
If we can just call for public participation.
Oh, public participation on the motion again, public participation.
Walt Johnson with KG Walters again. Um, you guys always have a third option. It's in the specs, some statutes that you can reject all bids. That is always at your disposal. So it sounds like you're getting backed into a decision that you probably might regret. And so I would, I would seriously consider that option. And that is, that's laid out. It's all through our specs and it's all through NRS. So you always have that option which is in the public interest, best interest. I just want to remind you guys of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment?
Uh, County Commissioners, once again, Philip Manley for the record. Um, Mr. Walter's comment is not inaccurate that if this specs we provide that discretion. However, Nevada law and case law interpreting the those bid specs and the statutes, including the Fisher Sand and gravel case that I cited to you before, say that the a board or a public body cannot give itself more authority than what is in statute. Statute says that the lowest responsive and responsible bidder shall be awarded the contract. And so once there's a determination as to there is a lowest responsive and responsible bidder, the board must award the contract. It cannot reserve for itself more rights than what are in statute and give itself the right to just wholesale reject all and go out to bid. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more comment.
Uh, Commissioner Keller.
And I just wanted to add this to it. A lot of this is we're looking at is these delays and everything else. If we don't award the contract, what we went out to and everything else, it's because of our own fault. It's our own line county's fault that that the contractor wasn't written the way we wanted it. So I I don't see any way.
Can I, can I address that?
Yeah.
So David Burketa, for the record, so um the the discussion, what you're talking about is the delays, the twelve hundred dollar delay, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So that is a typical engineering standard recommendation. Um, you know, we have to be cautious about that. I I think that when we look at other contracts, so I I wouldn't say that this is an abnormal. Um, something that's abnormal. So I just want, when when you say that it was written to standards that we didn't want, we accepted that line county utilities with our engineer. So that's an engineering standard. We we recommend that.
Thank you. For the questions. And then I think there's another comment.
So hi again, Dave Backman KG Walters. Um, so just maybe on the tail of what Dave just said, I mean, there's a reason the way this job was structured. It was actually us bringing to the attention of the county, the the complexity and how hard it is going to be achieve this schedule. Now, the LDs associated with the project twelve hundred build on the low side, sometimes they're as high as five thousand, depending on what the job is and how complex it is. But this job, it actually was restructured to be able to accommodate a little more time. But guess who brought that up? Us. Cause we've been a project, we back into the schedule. So we know we can do it going into a project. And that means whether we've got to fit in all the overtime and everything else to show you within that project done on that timeframe. That's why we do this ahead of time. So we're doing our due diligence, informing the owners as we go as of the viability of those schedules. So that's how you end up where you are today. It's actually through our efforts. Um, I can answer any questions if you want to. Keep talking about it.
Thank you. Any further comment? And I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion? Will you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to vote nay because of the contract itself, not for the process, but for the wording in the contract I cannot support.
Okay, so we have a four one. Uh, item six D passes in a contract to uh RDC is awarded. Let's take a five minute break. Uh, it is now ten twenty eight. Let's say ten thirty five, let's reassemble. Let's take a five minute break. Uh, it is now ten twenty eight. Let's say ten thirty five, let's reassemble. Okay, everybody's back in their seats. It's now ten thirty seven. We're going to resume the meeting. We've already done seven A, so we're gonna go to eight. Commissioner and County Manager reports. Um, we're down the line here, Commissioner Hendricks.
Um, yeah, I attended the Comstock Historical District Meeting and last night I went to the uh Carson Water Sub Conservancy District Meeting and they gave an overview of the condition of the Carson River and the flooding that's expected there. And it looks like we're gonna have a pretty tough time.
I agree. Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Been busy with with legislative uh meetings and stuff over the last two weeks. The first deadline for for bills, bills had to pass out of the out of committee of the first house or the house that the bill originated in by last Friday. So thankfully, several bills died that needed to um not enough died, I am afraid. Very, very uh interesting of the bills that died. Forty-nine percent of the bills that died were um submitted by Republican members of our legislature and fifty-one percent were by Democrats. However, the Democrats introduced a lot more bills than Republicans did. So you can see the political slant of our legislature. Uh, I am happy to say that Senate Bill four thirty-two, which was the bill that would have taken uh Story County property tax money that they've got to start receiving in twenty twenty-four, it had been invaded for ten years. Uh, there's a plan to take some of that money and give it to Washoe County and Reno and Sparks. That bill has died, thankfully. Now, I also attended the Carson area Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting and one item of interest there was um they're gonna do a a study, a complete streets program started in Carson City, but out to Highlands Drive, which so a little bit of Lyon County. And I also attended the Silver City Advisory Board Meeting on Tuesday night and there was some there, there are a lot of, a lot of concerns that they had about the potential landsville that we have. So I went through the process. Again, explains them that we don't have a landsville yet, but we are working on it and there will be plenty of of time for uh public involvement in that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Keller.
Just like Wes, I've been uh mostly on legislative stuff uh NICO Board Meetings, the NICO Legislative Committee. I've been looking over the bills. We had of of those bills that died, there were two hundred and thirty-eight that died. And that's not, that's just a small dent in the amount that they're out there. Uh, not all, the the deadline didn't uh include the ones that got exemptions. So if they had a fiscal note that put on exemption and something else that we noticed a lot on is that there were sister bills in the other house. So you saw one bill die, it's just because they had a worse one in the other house that passed. So so you you can go, yay, we killed it. Well, the the worst one survived. So uh we're we're still gonna be uh working on that. I've been uh attending the Senate Caucus, Roll Caucus. Uh, now, we're gonna spend a lot of time talking to each one of them individually and what their bills are and what they're trying to move forward. And that's Democrats are in there too, Republicans, both sides. So uh, it's informative about how, what they think is a priority for the world's coming out of the Washoe and Clark. So that's where I've been up to.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hock. They um attended the Friendly City Council last night. Sheriff Pope did a nice job of presenting um some school safety uh updates and and plans. Appreciated his presence there at the uh Friendly um city uh meeting last night. Um, also, uh I guess myself and another lady hosted a, uh, in Friendly High School hosted a career fair. Um, and we had uh Lyon County Human Services there. They did an awesome job. Um, wanna thank them. The DA office was there. Like to thank them as well for showing up. And again, Sheriff Pope and the uh our police officers were there um along with fifty some odd other vendors um from the trades to um Recumbentus Community College, W N C, U N R, um businesses. Uh, we had a lot of businesses there looking to hire. Um, and in working uh on a interesting note, I thought it was interesting. Um, we had a high-profile um way uh um business there, industry that creates scales for semi-trucks and whatnot. And uh um they said that one-third of their applicants get culled. Or they walk out when they find out they've got a mandatory drug test that is supervised. Um, I found that disturbing. Um, the fact that we have legalized marijuana in this state and now that's probably one of the leading indicators or one of the leading reasons why a lot of these businesses can't uh find employees to work. So that was a, that was a downer part. The 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 good part again was um, I just wanna thank those Lyon County entities that were there. We had over a thousand kids go through um and uh we have, we have a lot of really solid kids that that made the most of that career fair uh from reports that they gave me. So I was very excited about that. And then uh just following some of the legislative stuff as well. Um, I know that uh S P two forty-three might be something we get a report on. I believe that's with some of the water um stuff that's coming down the pike. So uh, other than that, that's all I have. Thank you, Chairman Hockaday.
Well, certainly attended meetings, but I did wanna bring up one item here since we're kind of moving along. Um had several phone calls about Pete Hendricks Road. Uh, I was out there working at the range on um uh Saturday and I heard a really bad kind of explosion when a car pulling a trailer, the trailer tire hit a hole that was probably twelve inches deep on the edge of the road, since the road is so deteriorated. All the asphalt's coming up from the uh, the big trucks that are driving up and down that road. Um, I I mean, the trailer jumped probably three feet in the air. I thought there was gonna be a significant crash. Um, so I I witnessed that. The other uh people that were calling in actually do a lot of uh commuting on that road and have seen many vehicles with tires that are blown out and hitting the edge of that asphalt. And so we've definitely gotta do something with that road. It it's just, it is getting narrower and narrower. I'm expecting the mirrors to to clash in in opposing traffic. Uh, so that was pretty much the, the the excitement that I've had in the last couple of weeks. Uh, so County Manager, you're up.
All right, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, for the record. I'll keep my comments fairly brief this morning. Um, I too have been tracking the legislature, obviously. I'm still working on uh updating my list after last week's deadline. I will be receiving a um an update at Legislative Coalition tomorrow. Um, so I will um keep the board posted on those issues. Um, let's see here. Oh, Mr. Foley asked me, uh, since he had to take off to his other board meeting, he asked me to let the board know that um that the shoots for the fairgrounds are coming in this weekend. So I think that's about a hundred thousand dollars. So um, that's something that was approved out of the ARPA funds last year. And then we are working on finalizing um the conceptual design for the Friendly Justice Court um redesign. So I wanted to let the board know we should have that more or less finalized next week. So that's good. And then um, I I will uh talk to Mr. Holman about Pete Hendricks and see if there's anything new about that. And then I know it was already brought up, but we do have a town hall on Tuesday, April twenty fifth, next Tuesday at five thirty. It'll be at uh the Arlington City Hall um to discuss you know, potential flooding impacts and flooding issues and river conditions along the Walker River um for both Smith and Mason Valley. So um, you know, got a little preview from Bert today about some of the um river conditions. And so we'll, we'll be providing information to the public as far as what they can do to be preparing and and that sort of thing. So that, happy to answer any questions.
Questions? I did have a a quick question here. You know, the, the news has been talking about the the feds clawing back ARPA funds and those funds that have not been designated for any projects. I know we have some money in contingency. Um, are we looking at that possibility that they might come back and take money from us? And if so, what are we doing about it?
So it is a possibility. However, I think it has been introduced by the minority side in the Senate. Um, so we'll have to see if that gets any traction. Um, we have, I know a couple of commissioners have individually sent me emails with concerns about that. Um, we are um yeah, we're tracking that, but I I know there's an item today to designate some of the contingency funds out of um ARPA. And so it is something that I will be working on with Mr. Fuller.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Keller first. No, okay, go ahead.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Shice. Wanted to uh touch on a lot. Mr. Haskins just, just um mentioned uh the amendment that is talking to is is was introduced by Senator Rick Scott of Florida. It's Amendment number eighty-one. And the National Association of Counties, at least the Public Land Survey Committee sent out an action alert asking for everybody to contact your senators and tell them to oppose Senate Scott's, Senator Rick Scott's Amendment Number eighty-one. So.
Thank you for the update. Let me think further for the County Manager. If not, we'll move on to number nine, elected officials report. The sheriff coming up.
Good morning again, uh Lyon County Sheriff Brad Pope, for the record. I'll take this brief since it's several items on the agenda. Uh, just give everybody update, uh, our missing woman and stagecoach. Uh, we did find her down in a ravine uh last night. Uh, she was alive. Um can't get into too much of her medical uh condition, but basically suffering from uh severe hypothermia. Uh, she was loaded on a helicopter and transported to Renau. Expected to make a recovery, uh whether that's full recovery or not, I don't know. Um, so just wanna give kudos to the search and rescue team uh for their efforts uh and our investigations division. Uh, Lieutenant Joyner, who runs the investigations division, uh got out on foot. Uh, went through the ravine, followed tracks and actually came across her. So um, he found her probably just in the nick of time. So it's a good thing is Commissioner Jacobson uh reiterated uh, we did make a agreement with the school district as far as zero tolerance policy for crimes. Um we've already arrested several students for crimes that they've committed in the schools that were heinous enough to be arrested, not not decided. Um, talking with JPO, it's been making a difference already. He said our two-hour referrals are up a hundred and ten percent since January, since we took over. Uh, that's a positive note. Um, school district is very supportive of the action. We're expecting a little bit of pushback uh from the principals and assistant principals. We received the opposite. Uh, they're very open, very happy to grow this partnership. Uh, spoke with Mr. Keller at a meeting this week and he pointed out that we have a student graduating from Winrick. We are going to send a member of our command staff to that. Uh, we do believe that it is important to uh embrace um their positive change in life uh from the sheriff's point of view, since they most likely had contact with law enforcement to go into Winrick. Uh, once they complete the program and graduate. Uh, I agree, Mr. Keller, it is important uh for law enforcement to be there, show that that we support their, their change in mindset and hopefully their change in their, their life choices. So other than what I have on the agenda, just wanna say, that's all I have to say right now.
Questions?
Made a quick comment on the.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Oh, go ahead.
On the Winrick thing, that I asked for all of the commissioners to be notified of that, but they have their graduations on the same day we have our meetings. So that's why the County Commissioners aren't attending that.
That's why I'm sending a commander, not myself.
I I believe I might have sent back a response to them. We're sorry, we had a mission meeting that Dave, uh, Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hock. Hock, I just again, I thank you that your officers that were at the career fair were awesome. And they look tired. So uh, they earned their keep uh on Tuesday. Yeah, so they were great with the kids. So appreciated it. So if you don't mind sending that out.
Anything further down here? Okay, um, I just wanted to make a comment that I appreciated the email, the public information emails that were sent out to the commissioners on the the uh missing lady and that we also got a phone call, I believe, uh notification. Um, so I think that was outstanding that you're letting the public know what's going on as much as you are and getting the word out in just about every way you can. So do appreciate your efforts on that. Thank you. Any other elected official? No, okay. Then we'll go on with appointed official reports. Any appointed official want to get up and talk? Anybody online? I don't see any hands. So this number ten will be crossed off the list. Uh, Advisory Board Reports. We have any Advisory Board members that want to give us a report? Wow, that moves it along. Consent Agenda. Action will be taken on all items. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action and without an extensive hearing. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. I just had one real quick comment. I'm uh, I'm not gonna pull the settlement agreement uh because it's uh like twelve hundred pages. Um, but I did wanna say that for those of us that read through a lot of it, there are some red flags that are a concern, I think, for rural um states. And uh things such as it's a red flag if your pharmacy is more than fifty miles away from your residence. Eh, I'm thirty miles away, getting close, but I'd be red flagged if I was fifty miles away. So there are some things in there that I think gonna have to be worked through. Eventually, they'll probably be brought up. Certainly not anything important enough to uh stop us from voting on accepting the settlement and the uh millions and millions of dollars that the county will receive uh to Health and Human Services. But given that, I will look for a uh
Mr.
Input from the commissioners on this.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to pull items thirteen D, thirteen G, and thirteen H for further discussion.
What was, what was those numbers?
Thirteen D, G, and H.
You said B is a more.
D is a dog.
Delta Golf Hotel.
Make a motion if you're ready.
Okay, um.
District Attorney, I just wanted to let the chair know I uh based I have the attorney, Richard Hyde, present. If you have questions on those opioid settlement agreements. So if you did want to pull those items, I did make arrangements to have him uh here via Zoom if you did have questions. It's up to the board on that.
Good. Could we, could we pull those two thirteen B and thirteen, thirteen C, I wrote down a couple of things.
Okay, so we're pulling thirteen Bravo and Charlie, Delta Golf Hotel.
Would you entertain a motion?
Okay, I will entertain a motion, man.
Yeah, I moved to approve the consent items. Twelve A through fifteen D with removing thirteen B, C, D, G, and H.
With removing thirteen B, C, D, G, and H for discretion. Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those. Well, let's see, all those in favor of approving the. Now, let me back up. Any public comment on this? Okay, so you have the motion. I have a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hey. Let's go ahead and pull those items and B, C, D, G, and H. And we'll start with B and. Move on from there.
Thanks, Chairman Hockley. Just a couple of things. First of all, did we have much? Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah. For possible action, approve a settlement agreement between the state of Nevada and participating entities. And CBS Pharmacy dated March second, twenty twenty three, and the subdivision participation form related to the opioid litigation unauthorized. The chair to sign the necessary documents to implement the settlement for Lyon County, Nevada. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Hockley. Mr. Rye, did we have much say on how these? How to spend these funds really? I just want to be. It doesn't seem like we had a lot and then did we involve? Was Ms. Holmes involved in that decision? Just. It seems like a lot of money and I just want to give a get a brief overview of how that went down.
Okay, so Steve Wright, District Attorney, and as I mentioned previously, Richard High. Who's with the Haglett Law Firm, I think I pronounced that right, representing the county in these cases. Along with the Attorney General's Office, just a little brief history. Lyon County, a couple of years ago, decided to join with other entities in Nevada, including the state. And entered into the Nevada One Agreement, which was a settlement for. That was beneficial for Nevada and the participating agencies. That kind of had a framework of how the settlement would work. And so now you've seen, I think there was an agreement on a couple of meetings ago. And these two today that are just in furtherance of that process. What the board did with the Nevada One Agreement. For Lyon County is they worked with Shayle Holmes, Human Services, she's right here, she can speak to it. She set up a program to use the funding based on that initial agreement. And so as the additional funding comes in, I believe it's her plan, I'll let her speak briefly. To come forward to the board and present to the board what the plan is for those, the use of those monies. If you read the settlement agreements that are attached today. There are limits on the use of the funds and it's it's kind of a generic term, but opioid remediation. And so it falls under that umbrella and human services, that has been their focus on making sure that it does come into that umbrella. You also see in the agreement that you can use it for other purposes. Then maybe Mr. High can speak to this, but you have to report it to the settlement. Whatever that settlement group is, for instance, in the CBS. Action or in the Algen action, you have to report the use of the funds if it doesn't fit under that umbrella. Doesn't mean you can't do that. To answer Commissioner Jacobson's questions, my interpretation of the agreements that the county's entered into thus far. The use of the funds is limited. There's not a lot of discretion. And based on the Nevada One Agreement, there is not a lot of wiggle room for the county to do something other than what's presented in these settlement agreements. We're part of a team sort of. And Mr. High and others have negotiated these agreements. With the idea of trying to benefit everybody equally. So I can turn it over to. I guess to Shayla and then Mr. High is on the scene.
Good morning, Shayla Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services. I don't have too much more to add for what District Attorney Wright stated, but within that initial settlement, there was. A very clear. List or document that identified what the uses could be for. And then we created as a part of a requirement to access state opioid funds. So a part of this Nevada One Agreement, each county gets a percentage. And then the state also has a bucket of money of which we'll be able to write grants for. The state requires each county wanting to write for those grants to have an opioid misuse. Plan and assessment of which I presented to you guys at our last Board of Health. I don't have the date right offhand. And the Board of Health approved. So we are utilizing that document, that Lyon County plan, which is in alignment with the settlement requirements. And utilizing community input and stakeholder feedback. And we're utilizing that plan to prioritize how we utilize these funds.
Right, Chairman Hockley. And I remember those, obviously, those conversations. I just wanted, since we're voting on this today, to maybe refresh and and let those people that were tuned in to hear that. And then. This might be from Mr. Mr. High. Appreciate you being here today. Attorney fees and costs, I'm just reading from this package. Attorney fees and costs were. Resolved directly with outside counsel and will not be deducted. So. I'm just curious. I didn't see it in there. And then on page nine hundred and thirty five, there was also this statement. Estimated ten equal annual payments to be dispersed. Attorney fees and costs resolved directly with outside counsel and not deducted. So no, it looks like Nevada's portion is about. Eight hundred or excuse me, almost eighty one million dollars. I didn't see in here what the total attorney fees were out of that money. Is there a number that we can? Because I believe for the entire country, it was. Geez, was it eighty billion or something? But what 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 were the attorney fees on all of this? I'm just curious.
Yeah, absolute, Commissioner. Richard High for the record, outside counsel to Lyon County for the Nevada opioid litigation. First off, the settlement that you're referencing is, I believe, is the CBS settlement. Which in the total was for one hundred and fifty one million approximately. And Commissioner, you're correct, attorney fees and costs. Were resolved with outside counsel directly and will not be deducted from the settlement. In addition to the documents that have been provided to you, there were allocation charts that were provided by Mark Kruger. Of the state of Nevada, he is the chief deputy. For the Bureau of Consumer Protection, it outlines the total abatement amount, which was one hundred and fifty one million allocated to the state of Nevada. The state gets recovery from that, which was approximately sixty six million. And then the allocation to the governments totals eighty five million approximately. So those two numbers in total should sum to one fifty one million. The net allocation to local governments, the eighty million that you referenced, takes into account. Monies that we must contribute to what is called the Common Benefits Fund. Since this litigation was national in scope, but Nevada participated in its own litigation, separate and apart from what we call the multi-district litigation. We. There were some shared costs which need to be remitted to this common benefit fund, which other states had provided. Our share of those common benefit costs are approximately four million. So when you take eighty five million minus the four million allocated to the local governments. It comes to eighty million approximately, close to actually to eighty one million. So the chart that I referenced earlier, the one that Mark Kruger sent to Lyon County. As an allocation CBS, it's my understanding that Lyon County's share for the CBS settlement alone. Is one point two seven, one point two million. Which is to be allocated over a ten year period. And as Ms. Holmes indicated, there is a separate bucket from this. In which the local governments, including Lyon County, may apply for to get additional funds. So the eighty billion, Commissioner, that you referenced was the total settlements to date nationally. I don't know if they include Nevada's per se. But that includes other defendants such as manufacturer defendants. And and others that may or may not have been included in the state of Nevada because they did not conduct business in Nevada. Obviously, our lawsuit can only extend to companies. That operate within the state. We can't sue companies that have no involvement with the state. But. My. My understanding is is that settlements to date that we've recovered for the state of Nevada are in excess of five hundred million. Total since this litigation began. And for comparison's sake, the CBS settlement was one hundred and fifty one million. The national settlements have predominantly been based off of population. That was one of our criticisms. And that the rural counties were not accounted for. In in the harm, particularly with Nevada being ranked fourth in the nation. During different years in terms of opioid addiction and deaths. To give you an idea, the state of New Jersey from the CBS settlement received one hundred and thirty million. With a much higher population base. As your outside counsel, we did not agree to participate in the national settlement because our. Amount would have been much less based on an allocation or proportionally based on population. But we were able to obtain one hundred and fifty one million for the state, of which Lyon County gets a sizable amount. Had we joined the national settlement, it would have been a lot less. The settlements are confusing to some extent, and I will clarify. That in CBS, the attorney's fees and costs were only are going to be paid by outside counsel. And won't be deducted from the one hundred and fifty one million, with the exception of that common benefit fund. For four million. However, the, which we'll discuss in a separate item, the Algen settlement. No costs will be deducted from that settlement. However, attorney's fees will be deducted from that settlement because we could not reach an agreement without that counsel there. The counties generally have a twenty five percent retainer agreement. There was a fifteen percent applied to. One set of the distributors due to a ruling from the national judge in the opioid case. But for the most part, our fees were twenty five percent. And I believe that those fees are actually lower than than most other fees and retainer agreements across the country. May have taken higher fees. I don't know the exact amount for attorney's fees. Overall, nor with respect to Algen, I don't have information on hand. But I do know that we've recovered. At least five to sixfold more than most jurisdictions. I would say that number would be higher. Had if I had the numbers, the exact numbers in front of me. But I'd be happy to answer any other additional questions the commissioner may have.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Miss, I not a question, but a comment. That is one beautiful desk behind you.
Thank you. I inherited it from another partner who retired. It's a replica of the Resolute Desk, so. Very nice.
Any further comments, questions? Public comments, questions? Okay. Yeah, we haven't discussed C or have your question.
Haven't read C and.
I'll read C.
Yeah, I have comments on C, so let's do it.
Okay, so let's do it. Thirteen B then, motion for thirteen B.
Chairman Hockley, I'll make a motion to approve settlement. With CVS related to the opioid litigation and authorized the chair to sign documents to effectuate the settlement.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Carries five oh vote. Now we'll do thirteen C for possible action through the settlement agreement dated February sixteenth, twenty twenty three with Algen Finance LLC, Algen Limited, Algen USA Incorporated, and Algen Incorporated. And subdivision participation form. Related to the opioid litigation authorized the chair to sign the necessary documents to implement the settlement for Lyon County, Nevada. Commissioner, comments or questions? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious how much money we're getting. Because it says in in the summary that we're getting two hundred and four thousand eight hundred and twenty three dollars and twenty four cents. Over ten years with a. Net allocation of twenty nine thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and forty six cents a year. Multiplying that times ten is way more than the two hundred and four thousand. And then in the paragraph above that, it says we're getting the installments over seven years. So how much money are we getting?
For the record, Richard High. Of Aggett Adams, outside counsel to Lyon County. I have the allocation chart in front of me. I'm looking at it. It's a bit. It's organized differently than a prior chart that I looked at, so I just want to be certain I give you a correct information. Let's see, total Nevada recovery is twenty six point five million. The annual payments, when it's split up over seven years, which was part of the agreement, was three point seven billion overall. And. Costs will not be deducted from the settlement, but attorney's fees will. So if you look at the chart, there is an attorney's fees column that is estimated. It appears that four thousand one hundred and sixty three dollars will be deducted. From the settlement for Lyon County specifically. With the. Annual net allocation of twenty nine thousand to the county. And then when you take into account. Overall, it's two hundred and four thousand. To the county if it were to the total net allocation. I apologize. It's a bit confusing. I did not create the chart. But I do know that this settlement is much smaller in scope. The Algen did not. So so. If the commissioners recall, there there was a New York Times or New York Post article. Before the litigation began, which outlined market share and how many pills were going into particular zip codes. When we obtained this data and analyzed it with what information we had from the Attorney General's investigation. It demonstrated that Algen's market share was not as large as others. So the settlement is predicated on how many coming pills from that company were coming in. Hence why it is much smaller in scope compared to say CBS, who operates more businesses and who dispends more pills. We did not believe Algen to be a important defendant to bring to trial. So everyone's aware, as as. District Attorney Rye mentioned, there was one Nevada agreement, which basically. Allowed the cities and counties of the state of Nevada to join together to litigate these common claims. And. Since all the county and city cases are stayed pending a. An appeal with Nevada Supreme Court, the state's cases proceeding and facilitating all these settlements in which everyone is getting a share of. As of today, the state of Nevada's trial is set for July twenty fourth. We also, as you know, represent the state of Nevada. And there are only two defendants that are left. There's one manufacturer and one pharmacy. To the extent any other defendants settle out, then we will present you obviously with more. Settle agreements to for your consideration. But the idea generally from a high level is that once this trial resolves, either by settlement or verdict. That should resolve every county's and city's claims for Nevada for a final settlement. So we're just kind of like fiddling away with defendants. But going back to Algen, it's a small peripheral defendant and swat settlement is basic million. And I believe those numbers in Mr. Kruger's chart reflect how much Lyon County is getting. But I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Okay, well, thank you for that. And so do doing the math, it looks, we're going to get the twenty nine thousand over a period of seven years, correct? Okay, that answers my question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The correction, it's twenty nine thousand for the year, so multiply that out. It'll be. More, seven times that.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further?
What a motion or a couple of comments?
Okay, public comment. I don't see any, so I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a settlement agreement dated February sixteenth, twenty twenty three with Algen Finance LLC. Algen Limited, Algen USA Inc., and Algen Inc. And subdivision participation form related to the opioid litigation and authorized the chair to sign the necessary documents to implement the settlement for Lyon County, Nevada.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Vote five oh. And we're going to move on to thirteen G or D. Get to the right page here. Read in the record here for possible action, prove a two-year contract with mobile APP to provide information from the sheriff's office and emergency management to the public and reverse nine one one services in the amount of. Nineteen thousand five hundred and seventy eight dollars and fifty cents. The first year and seven thousand nine hundred and ninety five the second year and authorize a budget transfer from the general fund contingency. For the first year's funding. Hey, Commissioner, questions, comments? I believe this is for you, Commissioner Henderson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a question about as I certainly support the the purchase of of this app. But my my question, is this going to be used strictly for the sheriff's office? Or is also going to be used by our emergency management department or in other county departments?
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record. So similar to the current system that we use, which is code red. This would be available, you know, in the case of. this would be available, you know, in the case of emergency management or even utilities, if they need to get a message out regarding a boil water notice, so it would be for other departments.
Yeah, so so then then my question is, is why is it in the contract with the county and not with the sheriff's department?
Sheriff Brad Pope for the record. Other sheriff's offices around the the state utilize this app. What was unique about this app where we wanted to make a change that other sheriff's offices don't was include other county entities such as emergency management. What we would do is make Ms. Allison a administrator of the app and give her an actual function on the app. It's predominantly designed around law enforcement. However, we wanted to use it outside of that that box and include emergency management. We've had a pretty good partnership going so far with communication and getting things out to the public. So that's why we included initially, it was just for the sheriff's office, but we wanted to include other county entities, mainly emergency management, so.
Yeah, and and how is this funded generally? Is this the sound of nine eleven surcharge?
Well, so right now, there is an eleven thousand dollars that emergency management pays towards the Code Red system. A unofficial poll of the Code Red system is that it's been failing. Last time we sent one out, over thirty-four percent of the people didn't even receive the Code Red. So we were looking for a different communications method. So initially, we would take that eleven thousand dollars that we're paying towards Code Red because that contract is up in June or July. And they would apply that to this system. The sheriff's office would pay eight thousand dollars towards that system. But after year one, the Lion County Sheriff's Office would maintain that eight thousand dollar charge. And that would free up eleven thousand dollars in the emergency management budget, starting twenty-four, twenty-five budget cycle.
Okay, but does the does the funding for this, does it come from the nine eleven surcharge?
I don't know where emergency management gets their funding for the Code Red. I know it comes out of their budget. This would come out of the Lion County Sheriff's Office budget, not the nine-one-one surcharge. It's something that we could look at in the future if we wanted to take it out of that line item, but right now we're we're just looking at our budget as a whole. Okay.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Sheriff Pope.
And thank you, Chairman Hockaday, as well. It looks like this system's, once it's implemented, will act, will actually save about three thousand a year?
Approximately.
Okay, and we're going to use it for more emergency services and whatnot. And then does this also team up with like Amber Alert as well, or is that different?
It's different, but we we can put yeah, such as Amber Alert on there, Silver Alerts, Amber Birds.
Right off.
So what we found, what I found speaking to large groups of people, sorry, throughout my short time as the sheriff is that people love the Facebook posts and reaching out to the public, but the question we get a lot is, I don't have Facebook, so how can I get these alerts? And it's not appropriate to send a Code Red alert for multiple, the multitude of things. Ninety-four percent of people in Lion County have a cell phone. So this would be a free app that you download and it gives you access to contact from the sheriff's office and emergency management. Our biggest hurdle is to let people know that the Lion County Sheriff's Office does not track your cell phone if you download this app. It is a one-way direction. We don't track your movements. There's no way for us to track where you're at, to use it as a tracking tool or a location device if we're looking for you. So that I believe will be our biggest hurdle. But like I said, several people asking, we can't get the information. We refuse to use Facebook. We just don't want to be on social media. So how do we get that information? And I think this has been the the best solution that we can come up with.
Yes.
Taylor Allison for the record. Just a couple more things. Sheriff Pope mentioned interoperability at Code Red. So we have had some challenges. We recently learned from DEM that if you draw a map over a body of water, it will miss certain number of residences. It is landline based, so you have to opt in for your cell phone to be notified, similar to the one that you received yesterday. So this allows us to access more folks with cell phones. And then the other thing regarding the funding I did want to add is that the cities have contributed two thousand dollars for us to provide electronic notification system as part of and now expired MOU for the county to offer emergency management services. So I'm looking forward to working with the cities to look at that MOU and make sure that we address that.
Nice. Good job.
Further?
Yes, yeah, thank you, Michelle. Like I said, all along, I I wasn't questioning the the need for the app. You know, I'm certainly supportive of that. I just want to make sure we get it in the right budget, but if everybody's happy with it.
Okay.
So it can certainly be approved and signed by the by the sheriff, but you just need to make sure that's in the motion because it's, I don't believe that's stated in the.
You're good? Anything further? Any public comment?
Yeah.
I think you wanted to go with a motion there.
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a two-year contract with mobile app to provide information from the sheriff's office and emergency management to the public and reverse nine-one-one services in the amount of nineteen thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents for the first year and seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars the second year. Authorize a budget transfer from the general fund, general fund contingency for the first year's funding and authorize the sheriff to sign necessary documents.
One thing I would note is working with the developers of the app because we are at the end of a budget cycle, asked that we make this payment for their services after July one, and they were okay with that. So wouldn't affect the current budget that we're operating in, it would actually begin at next year's budget, so.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor? I did public comment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, passed by five zero. Okay, we have a few more here before we discuss lunch. Yeah. Thirteen Gs. And that was yours also, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and sorry to be pulling so many items today, but when I first read the agenda, my head exploded when I got to these two items. Then I read the backup and everything was calmed down, but I wanted to pull them because I want to hear a little bit about what this is going to do. And then also, I want to make sure that that when the funds are repaid, that they go back into the general fund. So, Mr. Priketa, please.
Chairman, I'm sorry, did you read that one into the record? We need to read that into the record, sorry.
No, for possible action, prove a contract with McGinnley and Associates for an amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-five to conduct baseline surveys on a proposed right-of-way for a future water line located on BLM land between Dayton and Stagecoach to be funded from a budget transfer from general fund contingency. Now, go ahead.
Chairman Hockaday, Commissioner David Priketa for the record. So just to give you a little bit of history, let me step back to prior to when I started two thousand seventeen. In fact, it even goes way back beyond that. There's been a conceptual plan in place for many, many years to eventually move a water line out east from Dayton, you know, to Stagecoach to Silver Springs to be able to help provide service out, water service in that area. It's part of the subconservancy did a plan many years ago, and this is all conceptual. So in two thousand and seventeen, prior to me coming on board, Lion County entered into an agreement with Stagecoach GID to put in a water line that would serve them for both Will serves, which is residents and growth, and for emergency purposes. So that was done in two thousand seventeen. We have that in our local agreement, and then I came on board in two thousand and twenty. We entered into Lion County entered into an agreement, a reimbursement agreement with the subconservancy to secure a right-of-way for that future pipeline. So we also have an agreement with Vidler Water, which is here today. They're providing in-kind services for part of this process. So we submitted a application to the Bureau of Land Management to put to for a right-of-way for a future pipeline. Is part of that, we have to provide a a level of the NEPA, the National Environmental Protection Agency gets involved. It's a federal agency. We're required to do this NEPA analysis or a series of baseline studies, looking at different aquatic animals. I mean, it's all listed in here under the scope of this work. And we're required to do that as part of this process if we want to secure a right-of-way along BLM land. And so this contract is to do the first step of that in the the assessment. And then once we do this assessment, then the BLM takes a look at it and determines, do we need to do an environmental assessment or environmental impact statement, which is a lot more complex and detailed.
And costly.
So to help pay for all of this, this reimbursement agreement that we have with the subconservancy, it's up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and they'll reimburse these costs. So Lion County pays the initial cost, which is coming from the contingency. And then when we pay the cost, we'll go to the subconservancy who will reimburse that amount, and then that'll go back to the contingency account. My questions.
Any further questions? Commissioner Jacobson.
Mr. Priketa, thank you, Chairman Hockaday. And the reason there's been a delay is from the BLM end, right? It seemed like when I was reading through the packet, it's because they're either short-staffed or something was going on, right? And that's why we've had a gap from two thousand twenty-one to now, but this has all been out in the public for a while, right?
Yes, sir, that's right. The BLM is is just, it's it's very slow in its processing ever, so.
Right.
Thank you.
I just wanted to hear if everyone here was not on our end. So, good job, sir.
Any further Commissioner comments, questions? Public comment, questions? And please state your name for the record and sign in.
For the record, Steve Harp. With the Water Company. And the synopsis that it was a good one. I was on the phone this morning with Congressman Amadee trying to get him to continue to prod along our friends at the Bureau of Land Management. There is a lot of work that needs to be done, and one of the things that needs to be done are field surveys on the environmental side. And there are timelines within which those can be done that are dictated by the feds. So we are running right into the middle of that. So we're trying to push this along as fast as we can so we can get those environmental studies done by by the feds and the private contractors who are going to need to be involved. So we, we Mr. Ales particularly, and our group have done a lot of stuff behind scenes, trying to support all the stuff that we've been doing for a long time. And we've continued to do this for a long time, and we will continue to go until we're all done. Because it's important. It's important and very important, I think, in the long term and in the near term to Lion County. Because the revenue side of the equation is upon us. We got to start generating more revenue. So in any event, we want to get this down the road as fast as we can. Because if we can't meet the seasons that we need to go look for the burrowing owl and do the eagle and raptor surveys, the migratory bird surveys, the sensitive plant noxious weed survey, the the dead and pale kangaroo mouse survey. And they're all standing in a line, so we know who they are. And aquatic resource survey. We've got all those costs here. And they've been here. We just need to get on with it because there's there are windows in which you can do those, and we're running out of daylight. So it's important to get these approved so we can get down the road and do the things we've been wanting to do and needing to do for a long time. So we would hope we can get these approved, and then we would really hope that we can get our good friends at the Bureau of Land Management to continue to work with us, and we can get through some of our normal agency hurdles that always exist. So anyway, I would appreciate you allowing us to move this down the road so we could all get to the end of the road.
Hey, thank you.
All right, thank you. And let us know if there's anything we can do and David good about that, so.
Sir, motion. Yeah, did public comment.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a contract with McGinnley and Associates for an amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars to conduct baseline surveys on a proposed right-of-way for a future water line located on BLM land between Dayton and Stagecoach to be funded from a budget transfer from general fund contingency with the understanding that the money will be reimbursed and go back to contingency.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Henderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Keller. Oh, Jacobson, okay. It's so quiet, I could hardly hear it. All right, and vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So pass five zero. And the last one here for consent would be thirteen H for possible action, approve a cost reimbursement agreement with the Bureau of Land Management, Sierra Front Field Office for an amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand for reimbursement costs incurred to process a right-of-way application for a water main between Dayton to Stagecoach to be funded from a general fund contingency budget transfer. And again, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Since these two are related, I wanted to pull them both, just so we can get the same comments on the record.
Okay. Any public comment on that one? The same, right?
Yeah. We are very much in support of that as well. We've had issues, and I think you know about those issues. There's a question on the reliability in the Stagecoach area of some of the water that's there. So this is a necessary thing that we need to do and have needed to do for a long time. So the sooner the better we can do this is we're we're all in favor of it, so.
Excuse me, sorry, you need to identify yourself again.
Steve Hart, for the record.
Again. Okay.
I know you're, I know you want to go to lunch, and so that's why.
That we want to get it right. That's what we want to do.
All right.
So 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 in essence, we're going to reimburse the BLM, and we're going to get reimbursed from Carson Water Suck and Services District. For this, okay.
Yeah. We're all working together, kinda.
All right. Any further question?
I'll make a motion if you'd like.
Go ahead, make a motion.
Chairman Hockaday moved to approve a cost reimbursement agreement with the BLM Sheriff Front Field Office for an amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand dollars for reimbursement costs incurred to process a right-of-way application for water main between Dayton, just from Dayton, between Dayton to Stagecoach to be funded from the general fund contingency budget transfer.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson, a second by Commissioner Henderson, all those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Pass with five zero. Now, it is eleven thirty-six. We do have quite a bit of agenda left to process. I would like to find out if commissioners will be willing to take a break for lunch.
Yes.
We're good? Take a break?
Absolutely.
Okay. So we will take a break until one o'clock.
One or twelve thirty?
I'm negotiable, twelve thirty?
An hour and a half. We have people that probably want to get on the road.
All right, then we'll go till, we'll readjust the time to twelve thirty. Everybody good with that? Okay.
Pack your luggage, big boy.
Thank you all for being back on time. All right, we're going to. All right, we're going to. Bring back the meeting at twelve thirty. As promised. At sixteen Advisory Board. Sixteen A for possible action approved to change the meeting day and time of the Smith Valley Advisory Board to the first Wednesday of the month at six P M. Or to ask Smith Valley Advisory Board to revisit the item and request a different day and or time, so. Uh, Mr. Haskin.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record, um, yeah, so this is a request from the Smith Valley Advisory Board, um, the only thing that I would ask the board consider is that. If there's ever a time when, um, the board asked me to go and present on a single item to all of the cabs. This would make it so there are three cab meetings on the same night. Again, that's their their request, that that doesn't happen very often, um, but just be aware that it would take me three months to do that. I'm not sure if that's, uh. You know, needs to factor into the decision, but it is something that I I wanted to bring up. Uh, the other option is to, um, ask them to reconsider, um, however, um, they have had their. Meetings on the. First Wednesday following the second or the first Tuesday, um, forever, so.
First Wednesday following the first Tuesday.
Right, yeah, yeah, so, um, you know. It it most of the time it already falls that way to where there's three on one night, but I just want to. Just wanted to bring that up.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday, um. First of all, I think it's important we support what, uh, works for the Smith Valley Advisory Board in the community. And I think that's what you said, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth there, if there is something like that. Um, I'm just curious, uh, does the Smith Valley, um, Advisory Board now have Zoom capabilities?
Not yet, we've got the TV up and everything else, they just got basically get programmed on Zoom and, uh. I'm not sure if IT has gotten that last hardwiring over the top of the ceiling and down, but it's close within probably a month or two.
Okay, um, and then with that, I think in order to support our, um, county manager. Uh, I think we just make it. Known to the advisory boards that we support our county staff zooming in. To advisory board meetings and handling that county business, um, and I, everyone wants in person, I get that. Uh, but to support, um, all of our county staff. Um, especially because it is a lot of times, uh, in the evenings. I think, uh, it should just be known to those advisory boards that, uh, that. Our staff is available by Zoom, uh, especially when Smith Valley gets it, obviously. And that, um, that the Board of County Commissioners supports that stance that, uh, zooming in. Is absolutely, um. Acceptable, um, and we, they shouldn't feel guilty about attending via Zoom. Those are my thoughts, Chairman Hockaday.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Keller.
So on my thoughts on it, there's a couple of things here. One is. If they. However, they want to run their their meetings, it's their meetings, they're trying to get, uh, uh, best public input as they can. I understand that, but if they want us to attend it at all, I personally wouldn't be able to attend it. On those Wednesdays will just be one more thing, but also the city of Fernley. I can zoom into those meetings, so I'm either zooming into those ones or, uh, like the Crescent River Water Sub Conservancy. Is also on the Wednesday night and. If I were to attend it, so my own personal thing, it'd be, they they could do what they want, but I probably wouldn't be able to attend there. Their their stuff, even if it was on Zoom and also we have, uh. Six o'clock or six thirty, I think, is what they were looking at.
Six P M.
Six P M. We've had this before, different advisory boards, especially this time of the year. But in the middle of summer, then it's like, well, wait, that cuts us off if we're going to be out in the fields working and stuff or doing other things, it changes. Constantly, all the other, uh. Advisory boards at seven, so we, everybody knows what time to show up and we start juggling the times and we might be missing some, so. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I've I've always had a problem with. Advisory boards having two of them or more meeting on the same night. When, you know, when I was first elected, Silver City and Stage in in, um, Mount House. Had theirs on the same night, Silver City voted to move there, so I can get to both of those. Um, however, that being said, we do need to support our advisory boards and if they think this is the best date and time for them to meet. Then I I think we need to at least give it a try, we can always come back and change it, but I would like to see us. Working to where all the advisory boards have Zoom capability. Right now, we don't, you know, Dayton does. And. Well, I don't know if any others do. But that that's something that that's for a future item, but. Other than that, and I understand the, uh, the challenge to staff. You know, but. You know, we'll work around those problems, like you said, that that issue probably doesn't come up that often. So I I think we need to support the advisory board.
Yeah, it 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 does not come up very often, um, I just just wanted to point it out, um, like I said, it it would already pretty much be an issue most of the time, so. It's not.
Yeah, it's Wednesday night now anyway, so.
Yeah, and sometimes I just, I mean, I do get requests to be at two meetings at the same time and I just have to say, no, got to do you next month and.
Let's just say that we have Smith Valley Cab on there.
Yeah.
So maybe they have input.
Okay. Um, certainly, um, any other commissioner comments? Hey, Smith Valley Cab, not sure who's behind that screen. Probably. Jonathan. I don't see a hand. They're here. Did you guys have anything to say? Obviously, not unmuting themselves. Any other comments, that commissioner comments and public comments and Smith Valley Cab comments? If not.
Chairman Hockaday, is that the public participation then?
Yep.
All right, with that being done, I would like to make a motion that we approve to change the meeting day and time of the Smith Valley Advisory Board to the first Wednesday of the month at six P M.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Okay. A, uh. Motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Five ayes and zero nays. Sixteen A pass passes sixteen B for possible action, appoint a member to the Smith Valley Advisory Board with a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Open it up to any commissioner comments.
Before you do that, Andrew Haskin, for the record, I just want to make sure that you're aware there is the late backup players.
Right, cut that off the internet and also this morning.
I didn't get that, did you?
It's a, it's an application for Michael Weiss.
No.
I guess, I don't have that.
Yeah, it was on the desk. Also, also it was, yeah.
Yeah, I will share.
Yeah, go ahead and and please read through that. And I believe it was also emailed out yesterday.
That's all I need.
I'll give you a minute to, uh, look through it and any other questions or comments, Commissioner Jacobson.
Chairman Hockaday, I see Smith Valley, uh, didn't weigh in on that last one, the cab, but, uh, do they have? Any suggestion or or guidance for us on who they might, um, recommend?
Uh, no, they didn't make any recommendations. I mean, I will make an appointment. Whenever we get to that point, but, uh, can make a motion. Whenever you all. If you have any comments, then, uh, please, please comment. Okay, you're good? Just public comment. Any public comment? All right. Then, uh, I'll make a motion to appoint. Uh, Wendy Loomis to the Smith Valley Advisory Board with a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Okay. My motion. And Henderson's second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Thank you, we'll move on to seventeen county manager. Seventeen A for possible action approved to. Cancel or reschedule the July twentieth Board of Commissioners meeting due to the National Association of Counties Annual Conference, July twenty-first through the twenty-fourth. And. Mr. Haskin.
Andrew Haskin, for the record, this one's pretty self-explanatory, uh, three commissioners are going to, um, the conference, so, um, it wouldn't have a quorum here. Um, and so, um. You know. My preference would probably be just to cancel it, try and reschedule it and get everything, um. Prepared would be difficult, I think. Um, but, but that's a board decision, so.
Commissioner Keller.
Would it be appropriate to, uh, possibly make the motion to cancel or? Reschedule according to what the needs of the county at that time? Because I don't know what what's going to happen at that date. So is there a way we can make the motion so it leaves you open to if you need to? Because then it's a regularly scheduled meeting or a special meeting or anything like that?
Yeah, we we can certainly do that, um, if there's something urgent that needs to be heard, um, I mean, we can always call a special meeting if that was the case anyway. Um, because it essentially would be a special meeting, so.
Can, just like if your demand or something, you just want, so you're not piling it up for the next. Next meeting or whatever, it it just up to you.
It can work either way from from my standpoint, um.
Okay.
It's whatever the board's preferences on that.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Henderson.
Yeah, I thank you, just a comment I think is clear, we just cancel it, we can always call, you know, special meetings if something comes up. I I think that's just a little gray area, when you, when you do it that way, I'm not sure that. That everybody understands the motion.
I'm ready to make a motion if, or do we want a public?
Yeah, I. I I'm, I'm going to do public comment in a second, but my my comment would be that. Um, I just see the need for. Canceling outweighs rescheduling. Because if we do need an emergency meeting on some important issue, we can do it, but this way we. Definitely have it out of the way. And, uh, so my preference would be also to cancel. And it's public comment on that. I don't see any public comment, nothing in here, so yes, I'm ready for your motion, Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday, in light of having a quorum out of town that, uh, the week of July twenty-first to twenty-fourth. I make a motion that we. Uh, prove to cancel the July twentieth Board of County Commissioners meeting due to the National Association of Counties Annual Conference. From July twenty-first to the twenty-fourth.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? There is five zero. Seventeen B for possible action, approve a resolution, support of the Historic Routes Preservation Act. And that was, um. Requested by me based on the packet that I received a couple of weeks ago. Um, from, I believe it was, um, Marlon Igby, Naco. And, um. The. The, uh, congressional legislation has been in the works against since nineteen seventy-six and we have a possible opportunity to. Move on it. So, um. Resolution. Looking at that, we get to it. Seventeen. B.
I can provide a little bit of background too.
Yeah, go ahead and and provide some background while I'm getting the resolution out.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record, um, yeah, so, um. Way back in eighteen sixty-six. The mining law of eighteen sixty-six created what's called RS two four seven seven routes. Which was to promote expansion in the West, um, and so, um, there. Rights of way they that were granted by the federal government way back when for roads, highways, that type of thing on federal lands. Um, then in nineteen seventy-six, October of nineteen seventy-six, uh, F L P M A, uh, was passed that created. Bureau of Land Management and, um, all those rights ways were no longer, um, granted. And so in order for, um. Counties to get ownership of those right of ways, so they can continue to maintain them and whatnot. Um, they would have to go through, uh, basically a court process, uh, to to, they'd have to sue the federal government to, um. To get these rights of ways, so this bill, H R eight seven nine eight, um, historic, um. What was it called, the? Historic Routes Preservation Act. Would provide a process that basically the counties just have to prove that these routes were in existence, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Henderson.
That's not the bill, that that was, that was a bill from last Congress, it didn't make it through, there will be, there will be a new bill introduced, but this is. It it mirrored this bill, but there won't, it won't be H R eight nine seven eight.
Okay, that, that's my mistake then, I, um, I I see that now, it says that right on the cover, doesn't it? Um. Anyway, um. There will be a similar bill to this, uh, that will get introduced and to. That we're hoping gets introduced into Congress, that would create a process that would allow, um. Counties to take ownership of those, those rights of ways again, um, and so, uh. Uh, Commissioner, um. Pigby from Lincoln County had sent a request over to Commissioner Hockaday and he, um, sent it over to me to. To review, and so this is basically in support of that.
Okay, um, I'm just going to read one paragraph here real quick to kind of summarize, it just says the, uh. Uh, twelve western states upon admission to the Union were denied equal footing to the original states because the federal government retained possession of their public lands. And it goes on, Thomas Jefferson wrote. Um, that when new states are admitted that they would be on equal footing. And of course, that didn't happen, so this is kind of a a way to equalize that out. And, uh, put us back on equal footing with the, uh. States previous to that point. So what I'm going to do then is read this, the resolution, since there is a little confusion, people probably don't understand, I'll read through it. And we'll go through it, so resolution in support of Historic Routes Preservation Act. Whereas the Federal Bipartisan Infrastructure and Jobs Act, Infrastructure Act recognizes that due to decades of disinvestment. Rural roads are in poor condition, which has had a negative effect on rural economies and has led to increased injury rates on rural roads. And whereas the Infrastructure Act has made funds available to county and local governments for the repair, maintenance and safety of rural roads, bridges and last mile connectivity. Whereas these funds are available to counties for infrastructure. And connectivity only if the counties hold title to the roads and bridges and whereas titled to thousands of county roads. And underserved rural communities is held up because of costly and prolonged litigation with federal government under RS two four seven seven. Or is otherwise questioned or disputed, and whereas most of these county roads are badly in need of repair and maintenance to ensure the safety of traveling public. And whereas most of the roads would qualify for funding under the Infrastructure Act, and whereas the objectives of the Infrastructure Act cannot be achieved so long as county title. To RS two four seven seven roads is questioned or tied up in federal litigation. Whereas the proposed Historic Routes Preservation Act attached hereto. Would create and mandate an efficient administrative process for the adjudication of county RS two four seven seven rights of way claims. And whereas proposed Historic Routes Preservation Act requires that this administrative adjudication process largely incorporates the evidentiary test. Established by the federal courts for RS two four seven seven determinations. Now therefore be resolved that the Lyon County Board of Commissioners by and through its elected representatives supports the introduction and passage. Of the Historic Routes Preservation Act by the United States Congress. There's the resolution and that's what we'd be voting on, on seventeen B, Commissioner comments? Okay, no comments?
No, no.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Cherry, I just want to chime in on this a little bit, I've been. With this issue for a lot of years, um. And it's not really, it's not only about the Infrastructure Act. It's about gaining title to these roads. There have been numerous bills introduced in Congress, similar to HR eight nine seven eight over the years to allow counties to get quiet title to these roads. They have never passed through Congress for political reasons. Let's just call it like it is. However, Commissioner Higbee, who's also the Naco president this year, has been doing a lot of work with other other commissioners from western states traveling back back and forth to DC. Our senators, Catherine Cortez Masto and Senator Rosen are willing to introduce this bill. I don't think a Democratic senator has ever introduced this bill. Senator Manchin from West Virginia is on board, and they are working to make it a bipartisan bill. There's gonna be pushback from some members of certain caucuses in Congress. So part of the part of the reason for this resolution is to show our senators that we are in support of their proactive legislative actions to help make it easier for counties to get title to RS two four seven seven roads. That's that's my saying.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacobson.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Just a couple of questions. The third, whereas these funds are available to counties for infrastructure and connectivity only if the counties hold titles to the roads and bridges. I guess my question is, would we be taking over these roads from possibly N dot? And would we, these are not N dot roads?
No, they're they're not N dot roads. These are roads on federal land.
Okay, so that's good. I just want to make sure. And then the fourth, whereas a title of thousands of county roads in underserved rural communities is held up because of costly and prolonged litigation with federal government and or otherwise questions questioned or disputed. Do we have any disputed roads in Lyon County? I I mean, I don't I'm my concern is if we put something in there that doesn't pertain to us, I I don't know if we have disputed roads, do we?
Um, Andrew Haskin, for the record, that's a good question. I, you know, I would honestly, it would take some research, I think, to figure that out. I don't know that we have any that we have sought title to. How about that?
Commissioner Keller.
So I think it was the highway component of BLM is through Flip Mo. I think that they get guaranteed the access, the right of way, excuse me. So there's is work through the right of way. This particular one, a lot of it was connectivity too, from one spot to another that to go hunting and fishing and stuff that they can eliminate on us. And as long as we can prove that it existed back back in the day, we can keep it moving forward. So we don't have to take over them all. It just gives us the ability. This says these are priority. We need these or or the public says we need it, and we can get take it back.
And Andrew Haskin, for the record, again, we do have several roads, obviously. I mean, seventy three percent or seventy eight percent of Lyon County is only by the federal government, so.
Managed.
Managed by the federal government, sorry. And so you know, I mean, obviously, we have quite a few roads that are on on federal federal lands. So I'm sure it's applicable. It's just I don't know that we've gone through the process of trying to seek title officially.
And then I guess just a side question I was asked. Will this start providing grading for those roads? And if so, will this cost the county money because we're taking those over? And will we have an obligation to maintain those? And will that be funded?
Commissioner Keller, do you have an answer?
We we have a lot of roads here in Lyon County now that are non-maintained county roads, and I think that would fall under those, except unless we needed it for something that we needed. We wanted to to do that, make it into a like so. If a connected one, I know down in Lincoln County, the one that they were talking about, they were, they needed to have access to to pave it and do all that stuff. So that's what they put it on there for, so they couldn't do it. But the other ones, I think it's a non-maintained county road at that point.
So would we have to put up signs in non-maintained? Mr. Henderson, I guess I'll let you. No, go ahead, that's.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, just tried to to address some of your concerns. The the this resolution just supports the introduction of a bill in Congress. The bill in Congress passed that does not automatically transfer any road to the county. What this does is it simplifies the process for counties to claim ownership of the roads that they want. Okay, without getting bogged down in a lot of federal agency litigation regulations and all that. One one example I will share with you is up in Jarbridge. When back in the nineties, early two thousands, Forest Service closed the road that people use every day to go to Jarbridge. It's a big controversy. People went up, opened the road, Forest Service went back and closed it again. This is a way to a way for to make it easier for counties to get titles to the roads that they want. It's not an automatic transfer. The county would have to take proactive action to go to the federal government with proof that the roads existed prior to nineteen seventy six in order to get title. Nothing requires the county to get title to every two-track in the county. So this this is more enabling than requirement.
Right of way, basically. So that's.
Right. So I guess I guess you I we may, so by doing that, by us going forth, will that put us on the, we can put up, I guess, signs, county road not maintained. I mean, I I just want to make sure that that we're not creating dust and home and then a bunch of so.
No, like I said, the county would have to take action to get title to the roads. This doesn't, this won't transfer any roads automatically. So if the county doesn't want a particular road, they don't have to apply to get title to it.
Okay, thank you.
And you know, title for right of way through that BLM property. The other thing that I was looking at too is it a significant number of our non-maintained roads are not, they're gonna have signage on. So it's just one of those things where if we need it, we can basically claim right of way without years and years litigation. We've seen with like the the pipeline between.
Right to that. And very good. Just having a conversation. Thank you.
No, really, that's why we're here to make sure you can get the question.
Yeah, and if I may, one more, one more point, Mr. Chairman. This this is something that the western states have been trying to get through Congress for fifty years, you know. And there is actually a real chance to have it done this Congress. So I I think we need to support it and actually to reach out and thank our senators for their willingness to to co-sponsor the bill.
Right. And my questions weren't based on negative towards it. I'm just want to make sure that I fully understand what we might be. How big a bite of the apple we have to bite off. So thank you.
And I think they're totally fair questions. There were questions that I had when I went through it originally, so.
Well, and your questions that I had too, because when I got the packet, I went, what is this? And it was a Friday, or you gave it to me Thursday afternoon after the meeting, and Friday I came back to give it to them for a review. I said, this probably needs to go to legal. And plus, the next item we'll talk about here, you know, I'm looking at that going, well, I think this is way beyond my pay grades. I think we need some some questions answered, and that's why I'm looking at the the questions and answers up here right now. So any public comment on this? I don't see any. So I'm gonna look for a motion on seventeen B.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a resolution in support of the Historic Routes Preservation Act.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Jacobson. And I'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, five zero on the vote. Seventeen C for possible action approve a memorandum of agreement between Lyon County and Robert K. Waidner for representation regarding the Historic Routes Preservation Act from March first, twenty twenty three to December thirty first, twenty twenty three, and the amount of seventy five hundred dollars to be transferred from the contingency. And this was requested by Commissioner Henderson. So if you would like to explain that, sir?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This this item is related to the previous item, obviously. Mr. Widener has a lot of experience in public lands litigation. He's been working on this issue for a while. He's gonna work on this regardless of whether or not Lyon County chips in. I I asked for this item because this legislation is gonna benefit Lyon County, and we need to shepherd it through the halls of Congress. And I just don't like being a freeloader. And I don't, you know, they're only asking for seventy five hundred dollars. I think that is reasonable. So I I obviously I asked for it. I'm in favor of it. Like I said, I don't like not contributing to something that I'm gonna benefit from.
Commissioner questions? Commissioner Jacobson.
Um, I guess I just, my, the first question that came to my mind is are current federal lobbyists aren't handling this or aren't a part of that?
I'm not sure of that. That's why I turned it over, especially when I saw this was the first page in the back. It was, you know, send this money. So I'm not sure what came up on the with the district attorney. Do you have any answer to that?
Andrew Haskin, for the record. We haven't provided direction to our current lobbyists to to support this. I mean, that's something that we would certainly do. Regardless of what happens here today. Again, the the request for the seventy five hundred dollars came with the the packet and the with the for the previous item. You know, it was optional as part of that.
From from Naco.
Yeah.
From from Barlin, yeah.
Yeah.
The letter from Barlin. And and if I may, Mr. Chair, to try to address Commissioner Jacobson's concerns about the party group, they will they they will certainly you know, represent us on this as it goes through Congress. This this additional gentleman is a guy who is a subject matter expert on on this. And like like I said, that the coalition of the western states, the western states counties that are putting this just thought seventy five hundred dollars per county would be an equitable share to help get this through Congress. Like I said, this guy's gonna work on this anyway. I I just feel since we're gonna benefit that we should contribute to us.
Commissioner Keller.
I support their effort. I support everything that they're they're doing on that. I'm I'm not in a mindset right now paying seventy five hundred dollars for for something they're doing anyway. And I don't think it's freeloaded when they're the ones that initiated the whole thing in the first place. It's it's they just want funding for their project. I didn't go out and ask them for that, so I don't consider freeloaded. If they, if we wanted to put it in the budget or something for future times, that's different. But this is coming out of this budget right now, and I I I don't, I support their effort, but I'm not gonna support the the cost.
Okay. Anything else? Public comment? No public comment. So I'm gonna look for a motion here for seventeen C.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a memorandum memorandum of agreement between Lyon County and Robert K. Widener for representation regarding the Historic Routes Preservation Act from March one, twenty twenty three to December twenty first, twenty twenty three at the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars to be transferred from contingency.
Um, did you say the twenty first or the thirty first?
The thirty first. That's what I meant to read.
So December thirty first, twenty twenty three. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Henderson. Do I have a second? I'll second the motion just to take a vote here. And we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. We have two ayes, three nays, motion is defeated. So we'll move right along. Other eighteen A for possible action approved or deny. Approve, deny, or amend a resolution of the Lyon County Board of Commissioners terminating the declaration of emergency that was declared in Resolution twenty three dash zero six. And I believe we should look at Mr. Haskin, can you give us an explanation on that?
Sure, yeah. Um, yeah, so this is a resolution terminating the declaration that we did in March with the last round of storms. So you're probably wondering why we're doing this if we are expecting potential flooding here this spring. It's because the state's declaration only went through the end of March. So if we were to do, if we were to have issues again, we would have to declare another emergency again, is my understanding of that. Correct. So we felt like we should, in the last declaration, we checked with the EM, it won't affect our reimbursement or anything, our potential reimbursement. And so if or when we have additional flooding, then we will we will do another declaration.
Taylor, did you have anything additional?
Hi, Taylor Allison. For the record, I'll just add that with the presidential declaration request that the governor's office signed, it had an end date of March thirty first, and it's cleaner on our end for tracking the two events separately for what we already have seen and what we anticipate through the spring thaw to have two separate resolutions to tie it back to.
Questions from commissioners. Commissioner Keller, you had your hand going on. Okay, yeah, and appreciate that. Thanks for giving us the explanation. I know I'd I'd ask you the question. If we were gonna turn around and have another emergency meeting to declare when the waters may come down. So I appreciate the explanation again for the board. And any public comment? No public comment, then I will look for a motion. I think Commissioner Keller, you're gonna do that.
Motion to move to approve a resolution number twenty three eleven of the Lyon County Board of Commissioners terminating its electric declaration of emergency that was declared in Resolution twenty three oh six.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. So let me get it written down here real quick. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes five zero. Eighteen B for possible action approved fiscal year twenty twenty three through twenty twenty four plan for the provision of indigent defense services.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, for the record. Yeah, so we're required to provide a plan to the state on how we plan to provide indigent defense services. And so this is the the plan that's updated from from last year.
Commissioner comments, questions? Public comment? Motion? Are you gonna jump in?
Sure.
Okay. Here's your color.
Move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four plan for the provision of indigent defense services for fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty four. I already said that.
Second.
Good. Okay, Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Here's five zero. For possible action approved, agreements with Walter Law Offices, P L L C, to provide indigent defense services in the city of Yerington and city of Fernley Municipal Courts, expected five one, twenty twenty three. And let's get to approve a resolution adopting cooperative agreements to pass the costs of all indigent defense services in the municipal courts through to the cities in accordance with state law. Commissioner comments or questions? Public comment, questions? Motion?
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion that we approve the attached agreements and resolutions. Um, with the city of Yarrington and Fernley for indigent services.
Have a second? Commissioner Hendrick, those.
I believe that needs to be more specific with the language regarding this.
Oh, and Walter Law Services. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Second.
That was, okay, Henderson, second. All those in favor say aye. Anybody opposed? Passes five zero.
Or a second?
Yeah. Commissioner Henderson seconded. Uh, eighteen D for possible action, award the bid for the Lyon County District Court Courthouse remodel project. To the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Pellet Construction LLC. In the amount of nine million one hundred eighty nine thousand five hundred and seventy three dollars. And authorize the county manager to sign change orders cumulatively up to five percent of the awarded amount.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, for the record. Yeah, so the architect in this case had recommended five to ten percent in contingency. For the project, um, so that's where the five percent came from on the change orders. So.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly support the remodel project. I do not agree with. Um, giving you or anyone else. The authority to sign change orders up to a five percent of a nine million dollar project. I'm not gonna give anybody a blank check for four hundred fifty nine thousand. What and change. Um, and I think everybody knows how much I love change orders. However, I think change orders need to be brought before the board and not just approved and signed and withdrawn. So that that that's my position on this.
Fair enough. Is there a an amount that you would be comfortable with? I mean, I'm sure you don't wanna see every little. One thousand, two thousand, five thousand change order. That that tends to happen with these kinds of projects.
What what's your?
Mister Homestead said.
Mister Homestead has an input.
Yeah, with this project, there's so much hidden. Um, there's gonna be some change orders we probably know already. Uh, once they get into tearing walls down and they might find something that we didn't know was even in the wall. And so to hold the contractor up to wait and get it agendized and all that, you're looking at two to three weeks to have you guys vote on it. So the county manager needs some discretion on signing some of those change orders. And if it ends up being a five hundred thousand dollar change order, yes, I'm sure we'd probably bring it to you guys first.
So what, it it so is there a a? A change order amount that you think would be com- you'd be comfortable with? That that we could offer, I I'm not gonna say five, I'm not gonna say five percent. Is a is a blanket. You know, if if you wanna put in there something that the county managers authorize to sign change orders up to. Ten thousand dollars or something for a situation like that that comes up, I'm I'm good with that. But not just. Leave it, leave it blank at five percent.
Well, in today's age, you're not gonna get anything done for um, ten thousand dollars, especially on that big of a project. So I mean, I think the limit should be up there a ways. It should be, you know, fifty thousand or so at least.
Yeah, Mister Jake, Commissioner Jacobson.
Mister Homestead, uh, thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Mister Homestead, um, it's your. Advice, obviously, I trust your knowledge and expertise and. What what? What my, besides tearing open the walls and discovering something, hopefully, you know, not asbestos or something, but. What what is your anticipation on a job of this magnitude? I I guess, what do you foresee as possible? The biggest area where that might be a cost overrun and the demolition, obviously, probably not the construction, right? Or the reconstruction?
Well, Doug Homestead, for the record, facility director. We've had some problem with the plumbing uh, in that building deteriorating. They used a. A lower grade of copper pipe. And we've had several leaks in the upstairs area. Um, so. Let's say they get into it, find out, hey, it'd be cheaper to replace this pipe than just try patch it, you know, if they, because they're gonna have to cut into all the plumbing. And the cooling system and all that up there. And if they get in there and decide it's cheaper to replace the pipe, you know, you might be looking at, you know, fifty to hundred thousand dollars.
So, and I guess where I was going with that is if there is a change order come in, you would come in and obviously. Provide, um, Mister Haskin with. Your advice and opinion on on, yeah, that's gonna get approved anyhow, I guess. I'm I I wanna empower you guys to make those decisions because I agree two to three weeks delay. Could end up costing quite a bit more money if it delays the project. As a whole, correct?
Yeah, if we hold the contractor up, we're gonna have to pay their workers whether they're working or not. And just for an instance, they, we built that new dog pound, and it started before I was hired. And I was I was just here during the end of the phase of it, and they had over a million dollars in change order on that building. And that was a new building. I mean, that's probably why I'm in this position now, but um, and I definitely wanna stay in this position. So I'm gonna definitely be very diligent on what happens in that building.
Right, I I mean, I I agree with, um, I I totally hear what Commissioner Henderson is saying, but. At this point, I'm inclined to go with, uh, the mode of the agenda item as written.
And just Doug Homestead, I gotta remind you, uh, Josh Foley's one that wrote the the item, agenda item, and trust me, he is tight with his money. So he will be on top of it too, just as well as I will.
Suppose I should have pointed that out, Mister Foley, this is his item, but he couldn't be here, so he asked me to present.
I'm gonna be voting in support of it the way it's written. I I've just been around commercial work that, uh. When when you start diving into commercial work, it it is expensive. I don't care what little problem you have. And in order to get this done, it's gonna be more expensive to wait, so I'm gonna be voting for it.
Anything, Commissioner Hendricks?
I I just had a question on page eighteen fifty eight, ownership of the drawings and everything. If the county's paid for that, all that, why aren't, why don't we own them?
So that's pretty typical. I I'd have to look at it specifically, but that's pretty typical of drawings. Um, I know I, speaking from experience, I just had my house designed and same thing. Um, there's a pause on the plans that say that they're not owned. We're actually not authorized in the building department, so because they're they're copyrighted works. To make copies of plans and distribute them, even if it's your house. Um, we have to have you give an authorization from whoever designed it. So.
Commissioner Keller?
Yeah, that's just standard in the industry nowadays because the people buy and sell plans so much, they don't wanna use. Or even an idea out of a plan, so it's it's theirs. They own it, the architect owns it.
There's a specific, specific section in U S copyright law that covers that.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson?
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm I'm just not gonna be able to support this unless we put some kind of limit on. What what can be signed without it being brought to our attention, so. I'm I'm willing to go something reasonable. You know, twenty five, fifty thousand even, anything over that, I think needs to come to us, so unless that's part of the motion, I will not be supporting it.
Okay. Any further comments, questions? Public comment, public questions? Oh, Commissioner Keller, go ahead.
I'm just saying that anytime you work with commercial stuff, it's commercial grade, commercial everything. It's kinda like our parks where we pay ten thousand dollars for a bench. Fifty grand ain't gonna get you in the door. So to me, it's, it should be up there where it is, and I I have faith in you. And our department heads and everyone to come back if it's gonna be a questionable item, just bring it before us, but. We're putting you in that position, so you guys make those choices for us. Thank you.
I promise not to uh, come back with a change order on for gold toilets or something. It'll be for necessary.
You'll be buying then. Okay, um, if there aren't any further questions or comments, then I'll look for a motion. Yes, I did. Motion?
I'll make, uh, Chairman Hockaday. I make a motion to award a bid to Lyon County, uh, for the Lyon County District Court Courthouse remodel project. To the lowest responsive and responsible bidder Pellet Construction LLC in the amount of. Nine million one hundred eighty nine thousand five hundred seventy three dollars. And authorize the county manager to sign change orders um, up to five percent of the awarded amount.
Do you have a second?
Second, you said community. In your motion, did you?
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Jacobson.
Cumulatively.
Second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Have one, a Commissioner Henderson. And motion passes. Um, agenda request, item nineteen. Start with Commissioner Hendricks.
No, this time.
Nope, Commissioner Henderson.
Yeah, I would like an update. Some of what we got on the Walker River. I'd like to get one for the Carson River, see what's coming to the north part of the county.
Okay, Commissioner Jacobson.
Um, none at this time.
Uh, I I do have one, um, kinda direct the county manager. To agendize an item where we will discuss planning commissioner appointments. And along with a discussion of what we would like to see in those uh, appointments, this, and and we've talked about it before. Are we gonna allow them to have presentation? I I would just like to see this. In policy, where everybody who is applying. Gets an opportunity to speak in front of the commission. And that way, everybody knows what the rules are, because in the past, we kinda said, well, we didn't tell everybody. There are some people here. Some people that don't know, so I wanna make sure that those people who are making those applications know exactly what they can do and what's expected. And uh, that's probably, I did give you the uh, document for the. Or did I? Gonna give you the document for the National Guard? Well, here it is. Here you have passed it back to me. I would really like to have a a presentation uh, from the Battleborn Youth Challenge Academy. That's sponsored by the group and the National Guard in Nevada. And that I'm gonna give us an idea of what that program is for, to help high school students. That are struggling to get through. So, and I will leave that with you. Uh, if there's no further agenda requests, Commissioner Keller, you had, okay, then we'll move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Jacobson?
Uh, I said mine at the beginning. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hendricks?
I have none.
Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. I just can't let the day go without knowing or. Knowing that today is April twentieth, which is four twenty, uh, which is, has a um. Special significance to people who enjoy cannabis, so those of you in the in the state of Nevada that are allowed to. Uh, enjoy, legally enjoy cannabis, you know, and enjoy your day, and for those of you who are not legal to enjoy cannabis. Just remember that April twenty first is usually unannounced drug test day.
And we have Commissioner Keller. Uh, two quick comments, um. There will be a Naco conference of Nevada Conference of twenty twenty three. Uh, twenty six through twenty eight September in Elko. And I just wanted to also remind everybody about the flooding. Discussion on the twenty fifth of April, it'll be at Yarrington City Hall. And that's again, the twenty fifth of April coming up this next week. So if you're interested in how flooding is going and possibilities, as we heard our presentation today, item six A. Come back and see him, see him again. Go ahead, you have any comments?
I have one comment. I don't know if you wanna do it now or under public participation, but um. Either way, we're there, it sounded like we're there. So uh, I forgot to mention that we did switch agenda software, so. Um, so starting for the next meeting, we'll be using a different agenda software. You won't notice much of a difference, other than. The format of the agenda will be a little bit different, so. Um, so we've made some changes there, so instead of having them um. By department where there's a heading, um, they'll all be under one, just regular agenda. We'll try and group them by by department, but. Just just wanted you to be aware that you will notice that change.
Thank you.
They used to be.
Oh, Commissioner Jacobson?
Yeah, um, and then, um, did my request for that software come to fruition? That it was only gonna use one and two syllable words for me.
Okay, uh. In the Commissioner comments, we'll go to closed session, hopefully no. Oh, outstanding, the last public participation action be taken on yet until it's properly agendized, it's anticipated the public participation. Participation we held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time. During the agenda, citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record, and will be limited to three minutes. Board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item, but before we take any action, this will be the final. Public comment for the day. I don't see anybody in here. I don't see anybody on Zoom, so I am going to adjourn at one twenty seven.
Hello, hello?
No, wait, sorry.
Wait. Who's? Who's talking?
My name is Denise Martin. Um, I I've been trying to.
Yeah.
I would first like to say thank you for your time, as time is a priceless commodity. As well as acknowledge and commend the board on the many service commitments you extend to your fellow Nevadans. I live in California, and I've been.
Great call?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Every time I talk to a live person from any of the county.